You have one in the show.
Probably.
I probably have one of your references here.
She's on the board.
This way, so I'll call you.
True, yes.
Sorry.
Depends on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a.
It's different now. Right, right, it's good.
How are you sick?
Where do you want me? Just around the table, some of our stuff. That's the table. We're doing for you. Is it right there? Where do you put it? She's right there. Oh, I did it. I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter. Like, I, in my mind, it's a whole. And I, like, I watch you, like, tag everyone, because I, like, would be, okay, you said, sure, then, like, in your photo, and then I'm like, it's all principles.
Yeah, Dee told me half marathons are just so nice. You really got to get into that. And I'm like, oh, yeah, they're a lot better than the full marathon.
The year I trained for a marathon, around a half marathon, they are pretty good. Compared.
Yeah, they're a lot better. Preach that no, well, they're.
How many principles did you?
Morning, Wade. I mean, it has to be, again, good night.
Jake and Paul both had their daughters had a ballet recital. Uh, I know. So we had Austin, welcome, and Ryan, and Denise, and Shaila, and my son. Catherine's going to do it, but I broke her knee last week, and the district signed a case by making her run. Catherine's down, excuse me, two foot out cold, so. And she lived for a week straight. Now, definitely, I'm jealous about that. All right, is everybody ready? Let's get started, so we can get to them. Do I need a comment?
Wade always did.
This is the way you do it so well. I listen, and I'm going to just speak, burn, and do it. Welcome, everybody, to our work session. We are going to get started with an explanation of levies from our business administrator, Neil. But before we start, my, so that we can get through this in an organized fashion without talking in circles, let's write down questions or remember questions as each presenter presents to us. And then when, like, when Neil is done speaking to us about the levies, then we can ask him the questions we have written down, because he may answer them further on in his presentation, right? So, um, anyway, we'll just turn it over to you, Neil.
Thank you. I hope to make this less confusing, and it maybe already is.
Yeah, that helps, right there.
I was just going to say, I don't know if that will.
Love it. So can I just ask a question? Are these on our board book?
Yes, it is on board book. Oh, I don't know if this is.
No, me, yeah, so this is just a webpage.
The statute is just.
So I'm, this is the webpage, it's virtual, I can, I can manipulate it, change screen, so it's not in the board book. If you would like me to take screenshots, I can. But I'm going to talk about this. Um, I don't think, I feel it's useful to have, like, a PowerPoint presentation, because it's not interactive.
Can you make it bigger? Or not?
How's that? I can see that. So I'll have to scroll sideways here. So I want to talk about our levies here. So our first levy is a basic local levy, oh, sorry, board local levy. That's one of the two, actually, one of the three levies that the board controls. We have the voter levy, local levy, and the capital levy. And right here, our maximum by law is point zero zero two five. That has not changed in quite some time. It's not indexed to inflation, it's a static amount. So, uh, as inflation, uh, happens, and, but property values float up, it's supposed to cancel each other out, but it's been static at point zero two five for quite some time.
Sounds like we'd ask a feedback.
Is this working better?
Yeah.
Awesome. So, moving along here, we have the certified tax rate, uh, right here, and the auditor's certified tax rate. So this right here is a, is what is calculated based on property values. And then after we do reductions, uh, deferrals, and other adjustment property tax values, like when, uh, citizens decide to appeal their valuation, then they come up with the auditor's certified value rate. And then, at the very end here, we have our proposed tax rate. So in twenty, it says for 2023 data, property tax data is always a year behind. So for the 24 school year, for the 24 tax year, we use 23 data. And we propose as a board, uh, point zero zero two two one zero as the tax rate for the board local levy. You can see it was increased from this point right here. So it was increasing tax rates. However, because our overall tax rates did not increase, meaning the board voted and the capital levies didn't increase, we didn't have to hold a, sue taxation hearing last year. Is that, ring a bell? Last year, we didn't raise taxes overall, we moved the levies around, so we had more in our general fund and less in our capital fund. So that resulted in item thirteen here, our revenue of sixteen million six fourteen zero eight five. That's how we arrived at our levies. And that repeats itself throughout, uh, each tax, um, levy. So here we have the, next one, we have the charter school levy. We don't control that. The state board determines how many charter schools suits we have in our district boundaries, and then they calculate how much we would have to pass through the charter schools to meet their local replacement dollars. So we have zero control over this, it's just a pass-through mechanism to collect property taxes for charter schools. Um, next is our capital levy. And it looks like they raised the capital levy to point zero zero three. Previous, it was zero zero two five zero. We started out the year at zero zero one five, uh, one four seven, but because we shifted some of the tax, um, collection from the capital levy to the board levy, this rate went down. And we can see that the final rate is right here, zero zero one two seven nine. So we reduced, and it doesn't show here, actually, um, it does. Our previous collection was going to be eleven million, eleven point six million dollars, but because we reduced it and shifted some of this to the board levy, it went down to nine point six million dollars for last year. And I'll pause, I know we talked a lot, I'll pause here for questions, I know we said that due at the end, but I think that there's questions that might be kind of.
Same with Neil? Just a reminder, that when we're talking about these point zero zero zeros or zero zero twos, it's times that property tax rate value at the top, and that's seven point five billion dollars. So those point zero zero three doesn't seem like much, but when you times it into seven point five billion dollars, it turns into.
Yes.
Substantial money.
Any other questions?
So when you say propose, the two red, that is what you're proposing?
This is what we did last year.
So it's no longer proposed, it's an actual?
Correct, but the taxation that changed our titles from year to year.
I'm, I just wanted to make sure that's an actual.
Yeah, that's accurate. Uh, let's see here, so our next section, um, will be right here. We don't have any judgments, so this does not apply to us. Next one is our board local levy. This levy is what's voted by the voters, and if I remember my history right, we voted this in in ninety-six or ninety-seven.
What says right there is that, did you put that in, or was that part of the record?
No, for the record.
Okay, so that must be in.
Yep. So June twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-six, we voted in a voter levy, the voters of the county did. And they authorized us to have a levy up to point zero zero six zero. Right now, we're at zero 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 four seven two. And that, we didn't change that last year, and so that produced revenue of three point five million dollars. So between the voted here, the capital here, and the board here, those are the three levies that we control as a local board. Everything else is imposed on us. So, uh, we get down next here to our geo bond payments, general obligation bond payments, and that's a calculated rate. Uh, basically, the sufficient amount to, uh, service the debt on the bond, or the principal interest payments we make each year. So that doesn't factor into our true taxation numbers. And so our amount you have here is three point, uh, where I go here, three point three million dollars was generated. And you can see we have a little bit less here, we have three, uh, actually, the same amount here. So that's consistent each year, they calculate it, we send a bond schedule into the county auditor's office, and they publish that schedule here. There is some math behind that, our maximum limits. Uh, last year during our, our bond election or our campaign, we, uh, science calculated our maximum bonding amount would be four hundred and twenty-five million dollars. So we can seek a bond up to four hundred and twenty-five million dollars of general obligation debt. Obviously, we didn't do that, we didn't get the, even half of that, but that was an option that we had at the time.
What do you say that number?
I don't have, it's right around four hundred and twenty-five million dollars. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head. And then our next one here, um, is our basic school levy. And it's point zero zero four zero eight. That amount we do not control. That levy is dictated by the accommodation of the state tax commission, the legislative office, and Utah State Board of Education. And this is what we call our lo, a local levy, it's, it goes into our funding for K-12. We share, as long as we have a sufficient taxing units in our board levy, this is our matching amounts. That enables us to have the full amount of the APU. If we didn't tax this amount, we would not be able to have, receive the full value of the APU. So this is what forms, we know as a state guarantee. Questions here? Yes?
Which of those are affected? A couple of years ago, we did something in the state where it kind of equalized across the board. Which of those are affected by the equalization?
Voted and board.
That's where, that's where that.
Yeah.
Local tax effort helps.
Yeah, it works backwards, so if you, as you raise those levies, you get less state support in voted and local amounts. Uh, there's a, it wasn't five-year hold harmless, now it's going to a three-year hold harmless, where, I mean, if you don't raise rates within three years, you're not going to be negatively affected. But if you do raise rates, you'll get less support from the state, uh, in those different levies. There's a very complex calculation how that works, uh, but essentially, as we raise those levies, we get less on the back end, the state. I think this year, we're going to get right around seven or eight million dollars in state support in these two levies, in addition to what we collect.
I think that's been six years ago. Actually, a year longer than that.
I just remembered there was something that was affected by equalization.
You were involved in that, were you?
I was asking a question, sir.
On the equalization? I don't know. It was, I think it was Terry and, and the math teacher at Box Elder, I helped, Jerry Brown.
It happened not long after I got on the board, and I'd been on about seven years.
Okay.
I remember that.
Okay, yeah. So they just, the legislature played with this formula again this year, because some districts were playing with these formulas on either end. It used to be that they would guarantee up to twenty units, we'd call it, a unit is equal to point zero zero one. So we guarantee, they would guarantee, I think it was fourteen and six on either. But the LEAs were moving back and forth, kind of game in the system, so now the new rule is that you get a combination of twenty units of guarantee. Anything above twenty units, you start receiving less state support. Uh, we're at twenty-four units. So we are at the point where we're going to receive less state support as we raise those units, those taxing units. Whereas districts who are below twenty are going to receive more state support.
Is it, is it bigger, is there a trend with bigger districts or smaller districts who are above or below that line?
Uh, so as you raise those units, that increases the tax burden on residents, and so, um, smaller, more rural districts are going to have less taxing units, because they have, increase the lesser burden of citizens, and rely more on the taxing units, uh, or state support, rather, to make up for that.
And that just affects that basic school levy, or is that the?
The basic school levy is, is the guarantee.
That's the guarantee.
On the backside of the board and voted levies, there is a state support amount. And that goes down as you get higher and higher above the twenty units combined.
Okay.
What's amazing, too, the levy is what you see on your home's mortgage statement. That's the very, very bottom one, that's the one that jumps out off the page, because that's fairly big among the larger box elder school district also.
Yeah, the board local levy is also fairly large here. Uh, all, all this would be displayed on tax statement, required by law, it's displayed, um, but it may not be as easy to understand how much each is generating or from your property, because, what the state does, even though we have a revenue-based tax system, where unless we raise our revenue that we require, we'll hold a hearing, contestation, the counties and the state tax commission does not equalize, equalize property by property, they equalize on global, uh, scale. So your neighbor's property taxes value may go up some, and their tax may stay the same, whereas someone else with a newer build may go up or down. It's not really a rhyme or reason how they do that, they just look to try and equalize across all properties.
So if we, so you say we're at twenty-four units, and if we had gotten under twenty, and we received more state support, would we have more money, or less money, or the same?
Well, that's, that's, that's what I call equalization, it kind of equals it out. So they don't want to incentivize, they don't want to stand on a state support for an entity who has higher taxing units and receives more revenue. They're trying to equalize the revenue to some extent. Um, Peruk City, uh, school district receives zero state support, and they actually write the state a check we call recapture. Because their property tax receipts are so high that they, the way the math works out, they do not receive any state support though. It's all local revenue.
So when Nancy explained it to me, she said that if we raise taxes, we don't get to capture all of it, some of that goes back into the recapture fund, I guess?
Well, equalization through the state funding mechanisms, so it's equalized through less state support on the back end.
Right, so we don't, we don't get, keep all that we raise, some of that goes back to state.
Well, we do keep all of it, but what we do, what we do is.
We don't get money from the state like we used to.
Yeah, we get reduced income tax receipts is what happens. Our share of the state income tax pool gets smaller and smaller when we do that. And it's only on the board and local levy, and on the basic school rates, like K-12 programs, uh, as they explained, I mean, last week, our state support for K-12 programs went down because our tax receipts in that program went up. So the state calculates all our rates here, and they look at what, what is the percentage that you're collecting on the basic rate, on the, on, and then they take, times that percentage by the number of tax receipts, and they figure out how much percentage you're collecting there. So our estimate last year was to be about ten million dollars you're collecting the basic rate, we ended up collecting more like twelve million dollars. So we have the same amount of, of funding for K-12, just the mix between state and local support changed. Local went up two million dollars, state went down two million dollars. So that's how the equalization math works. Any other questions? So this is the explanation of the levies. Is there interest in seeing what it would look like if we were to, um, move these rates around? Do I have an active Excel sheet we can play with that?
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
It'd be interesting.
In your interactive sheet, does that tell us how much that would?
We've got an alley, and I'm not sure if we're live streaming or not.
Hi, sorry.
So I'll, I'll, you at least hear it, okay?
In your interactive sheet, does that tell us how much that will affect, um, so each helps?
Yes. So I will enlarge that. Hopefully, it's a work here. So, seven point five million dollar, billion dollar, rather, is what our, our, um, property valuation was last year. It's county-wide. We are going to, on average, we see about two point seven five percent growth in the county, new growth. And so that results in an increased valuation of about two hundred and six million dollars. I feel like we'll probably get more growth this year, based on trends I've been seeing. Uh, however, I'm going to use the two point seven five as a base case. Whereas we receive more growth, though, we can increase our budgets or, um, have less pressure on other areas if we receive the extra funding. So here's where the certified rate is a carryover of the actual rate from the year prior. Because we don't have rates yet. Uh, technically, evaluation's supposed to be done, I think, on Thursday. Generally, you won't get certified rates from tax commission until, I think, the twenty-second of June. Then we're required to have a budget passed and transmitted to the state auditor's office, uh, our county auditor's office, and the Utah State Board of Education by June thirty. So there's kind of a, a delay here, and what we want to do is passing a budget versus when we have information on what it will be. This is where creep taxation is valuable, where it kind of buys you time, you pass a plenary budget, and then after the plenary budget, you can go in and, um, see where you're going to land at in the month of July, and have holdback hearing in August to send a more realistic budget that's more based in reality or facts on the ground. So moving over, so we, twenty-four rate carried forward to twenty-five certified tax rate. This is right here. And so in this column here, I, right here, this is our rates rate that we have to play with here. And so these are all, they're, uh, I believe this is a zero sum rate, they, none of these have changed here. And so here's the revenue that we're, that we're going to get. Now, if we were to add, for example, um, this right here, if we were going to max this out, this is the voted rate. And our max is point zero, uh, point zero zero six zero.
One point zero.
And, oh, thank you.
Don't want false hope.
Pardon me, I put it in the wrong column. That would result in nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of new revenue. That nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of new revenue, let me, um, zero this out here, too. That new revenue would result in, down here, in forty-five dollars per year on the average home value of increase in property taxes. I looked up the average home value right now in our county is about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, based on sales data, based on county assessed data, because we don't have that yet. So raising the property tax value that we receive by nearly a million dollars would result in a forty-five dollar increase per year. Questions?
And that's maxing it out.
That's maxing that one levy out, yes. The levy is our smallest levy. It's point zero six of a percent. So nine and a half percent.
So that forty-five dollars is over the whole entire year.
Correct. That's just to generate additional one million dollars.
Okay.
Now, if we were, let's see. On our board levy, should we choose to max that one out? That results in two point two million dollars additional revenue. Couple with the nearly a million dollars and nine hundred thousand eighty-eight dollars, we get three point two million dollars of new revenue. The effect of that is raising property taxes a hundred and nineteen dollars per year. So it's about eleven dollars a month. This helpful, questions? So these two levies, the voted and board levies, are the ones we have for use in general operation for the school district. Capital levy is restricted for capital purchases, according to our board policy, that's any item costing over twenty-five hundred dollars for a single item. So I think about vehicles, parking lot maintenance, billing repairs, um, any of those things, what we use capital for. We don't use it to pay wage, to pay wages, it's just for maintaining larger expenditures in our district. Also, where you would, uh, for our general obligation, sorry, not general obligation, our lease revenue bonds, the payments come from that levy. So we have a lease revenue bond for Golden Spike we're paying on through this levy, the capital levy. Uh, if we were to go for a lease revenue bond for new school construction, whether it be expansions or brand new school sites, we'd raise this levy to be able to cover that amount. We have any other scenarios you want to have modeled or looked at, or?
So if we increase the capital levy, how much does that add?
To what, how much are we going to raise? So right now, we're collecting about nine point eight million dollars, we're about half of that, so we can collect another nine point eight million dollars. That's sufficient to service about a hundred and ten million dollars of debt, our current property tax valuations.
So do that mention, then we'll have the max on all of them, right?
Can you do the rates that we're currently charging and what the max are, and that again?
As far as, are you looking for, I'm not quite sure.
Current, what we're doing, what, what they're at right now, is that correct?
What's the rates that we're doing on that one now? And what's the?
Point one two zero.
So this.
Zero, zero, one, two, seven.
This column right here are current rates.
Okay, I got that one, and what's the max?
The max, it was one column over.
Zero, zero, three.
Here are our maxes. So ignore this, uh, this one right here, this controlled by the state, so voted levy is zero, zero, six.
I've got that one, I just didn't.
That's three zeros, isn't it?
Yes. So should we, on our capital levy, and I think they raised capital this year, and so my modeling, I'm going to use last year's numbers, so that's what I'm familiar with. It's still double what we have, so right now. So we're here to max all our levies out.
I think you put by extra zero in there. Or shouldn't it be three, point zero?
No, it's. Last year, this was zero, zero, two, five.
Last year was?
Yeah. That would generate.
The max, got it, I'm following, sorry.
They changed it for this year?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. I got confused there, can you go back over this? The capital levy was zero, zero, two, five?
No, it was zero, zero, one, two, seven, nine.
That's what I have, so where's the one, where's the two, five?
The two, five was what the max was.
If we're maxing it out.
For last year?
Well, for last year's limits.
But this year, they raised that, is that?
They apparently raised it to zero, zero, three.
Okay, that's where I was getting confused, sorry.
Sorry, I, I just realized that about ten minutes ago, they, they changed it. I'm sorry. So raising, doubling this rate, so northern max here, we're going to basically double from one, zero, zero, one, two, seven, nine, to zero, zero, two, five, zero. That's going to generate an additional nine point four million dollars of revenue. Where we, so that, maxing out all three rates, we're at twelve point six million dollars of new revenue each year. That res, that results in a four hundred and thirty-one dollar increase in residential property taxes. So, key caveat here, residential property taxes, they're about half the land in our county is considered primary residence, or linked to a primary residence. That is taxed at point five five percent of its actual value. So if your home is valued at four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, you'd be taxed on fifty-five percent of that, of the full amount. So essentially, of our tax revenues, twenty-five percent comes from homes. The rest of the tax revenues come from businesses, armed land, or undeveloped commercial land.
It's the businesses who are taxed at a hundred percent, right?
Businesses, second homes, uh, secondary land, so say you have one lot your home was built on, and the lot next to you you own, but you have not built on it yet, but it's zone residential, that's a, that's a non-primary secondary land, and also undeveloped commercial land as well. And also undeveloped commercial land as well.
So that four thirty-one is, would increase on an average first home?
Yes.
So that would be, just to clarify, like, would be thirty-five ninety-two a month, right?
Correct. On a monthly basis, thirty-five ninety-two.
And that's based on four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar home?
Correct. Now, this does not factor any new growth. Remember that we get a hundred percent of the new growth. So I'll use, over here in the corner, by the Chevron here, the medical arts building, new building going up, it was something before that, they redeveloped that, we would get a hundred percent of the new value of that as taxable value. Whereas if that was an existing building and disappreciated in price because of market economics, we wouldn't get any new value on that. So that new growth in the county goes back to that two point seven five percent growth I mentioned. That's, this analysis of cost per home on average ignores that, because it's very hard to calculate that and account for that each year going forward. So this is on average, if things stay stagnant, each home would require additional four hundred and thirty-one dollars additional new taxes each year to support this.
To support twelve, a little over twelve million per year?
If we maxed it.
If you maxed them all out.
Yes.
But then we lose money from the state.
We will.
So does that bring us really back down to nine million, probably?
Net, probably so. It's kind of a game, and these rates are going to change as valuations go up. So as we, in my prior presentation, talked about how the past seven years, property valuations have increased thirty-five percent, but our tax rates have increased ten percent. So essentially, we left twenty-five percent of valuation on the table as economic conditions on us improved. We paid teachers more, we paid more facilities, all our expenses went up, but we weren't raising our revenue to account for those increased expenses. So essentially, as valuations go up, our taxing ability goes up only if we choose to raise rates. So we could, as rates go, as our valuations go up, we could raise rates and still be below the maxes and still be able to recoup some state support, but not all of it, some.
Neil, I was curious about that capital levy being raised from point two zero zero two five, and so I just looked it up, and in Amendment B, I thought Amendment B, wasn't that the?
Two years ago.
No, it was this year, was it? What was the one on the school land trust being raised? Was that B?
A or C?
This says Amendment B raised the cap in for the twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six year. I don't remember that, and that was passed by the Utah voters, so that was on.
Is that the amendment that we passed a couple years ago, letting Chip and Medicaid receive some income tax money?
Well, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, so it was on just last fall's election.
That had to be tied to school and trust, because the other income tax bill was declared null and void because of the state.
It must have been that, that trust lens bill, okay? Just out of curiosity, because I hadn't heard that, and I, we go sit in all the JLC meetings and talk about that all the time, and this is news to me, so it's interesting.
So if people voted for the school and trust, they also voted to increase that? I don't think people knew that.
I, I didn't, so.
Yeah, I wondered that ten minutes ago.
Cost neutral, right, on the information?
Well, it just raises our rates to allow us to gather more in property taxes.
But it raises the amount that we can take from their pockets. I don't think people would have voted for that if they would have known that.
Probably not.
Because like we said, it was supposed to be...
That's not what's presented to the taxpayers.
It would only be coming out of trust lens money. It was only a good thing.
I'm second here, I'm gonna see.
Neil? State School Fund Distribution Crap Increase Amendment is what it's called. A vote, a yes vote, supported increasing the limit on annual distributions from the state school fund for public education from four percent to five percent of the fund. That's what it says Amendment B is. What did this change about? State school fund distributions?
But that's, we were told that it was just.
I think it was school based on.
Amendment B was just to change how much money came from school and trust from four to five percent.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything.
So I don't, I'll have to look and find out.
That levy is something, maybe something, because it doesn't mention that at all, is there?
Here is the...
Distributions are independent of other tax revenues that are dedicated to education funding.
This is the section in the tax rates that corresponds to capital, right here. And this was last, well, according to this, this was last amended in twenty twenty. So I'm not sure which bill that we currently have that passed that changed this.
That's all right, I mean, it's there, but it does say that, so, sorry.
Got to five minutes.
So on the bond, we were going to do two hundred and twenty million, and that was going to be nineteen a month. But is that, because that's thirty years, and the lease revenue bond, is that only twenty years?
So that bond would be twenty years. It's a great question. We've been talking to leadership team about the differences and how that calculated. I received about an hour and a half ago, the calculation files for our new school advisor, which is Zion's Bank, how they reacted to that. Essentially, what it is, is that even on your home, you have amortization schedule that tells you how much principal interest is going towards your loan. And in the beginning part of the loan, you pay more principal, sorry, more interest and less principal. And also, we also have the effect... Yeah, and we also have the bond that's falling off. And also in there are some property tax growth metrics built in, assuming there's going to be growth that we get taxable benefit from. So you throw those factors in there, we average out what would require to service that bond over the life of the bond, and it comes out to begin to average around nineteen dollars. But some months are as high as twenty-five, twenty-eight dollars, sorry, some years have an average cost of twenty-five to twenty-eight dollars per month. But when you add them across the life of the bond, it comes up to be nineteen dollars. So there's some other factors in the calculation. The calculation we have here is a straight line calculation for simplicity purposes, representing what had happened to the average homeowner.
But also, the ten plus ten dollars and whatever it changed, that's part of the old bond, that was going to stay on. So that ten is not going to, wouldn't have come off the book with our two twenty. So really, our nineteen eighty-six would have to add the ten, almost eleven, probably thirty bucks plus, is what it would have been, even though initially it wouldn't feel that way until the bond came off, but it wouldn't come off. Then we'd have to say, you'd have to put that back into the equation.
In addition to that, we would have been paying full on the bond upfront. There'd be the first couple of years, we pay, next, some years be nothing, because the first year issuance, you don't pay until you receive the money in the following year. And also, it was, the first two years are interest-only payments, no principal payments, so it's not a straight line payment schedule, it's a direct payment schedule, we call. And so that reduces the average cost per year, stretched over twenty years. That's why these numbers aren't exactly comparable. And also, there's a mix of property here. We have twenty-five percent of our tax collections come from residential property. Everything else comes from commercial agriculture or unimproved commercial property, taxed at a hundred percent. So the mix there, what you receive, is more complicated calculation, just saying, here's how much the average home is, we'll get this much over this amount of time. So that's why that amount comes in lower.
I think maybe it would be good for us to move forward to Keith and Corey's discussions.
Sure.
And then we may, then maybe we need to circle back to you.
Okay.
And for sure, get a recommendation from you as to what we would actually need to accomplish what we hope to accomplish. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
So Keith, if you'd like to?
Yeah, do you want to disconnect?
Yeah.
There's a, yeah, get the box button, you have a corner for, if you want to finish something out.
I'll get some.
Okay, thank you. We've worked on this the last few days, but today, we spent most of the day in this discussion, trying to figure it out.
It was this one? Oh, wow, it's okay.
We presented this to the board in January. We'd got, we'd had conversations with people, and I just wanted to point out, based on those conversations that we had with different companies, this idea that, you know, adding on to the high schools would be somewhere between sixty to sixty-five million dollars. Mind you, that in the bond in twenty twenty, we had budgeted sixty-six million dollars for that project. But we had seen a, we had heard that, oh, it's going to be down just a little bit, so that's why we lowered it from sixty-six million to sixty million. I mean, something, we lowered it a little bit, just because the information we received from builders is that the price per square foot was going down. I want you also to see this number right here. Twenty-five to thirty million. Now, Golden Spike was thirty million, but they're saying if you bought a, build a school that's a little smaller, that, and with the prices the way they were, that perhaps we could squeeze into that number.
And West Tremont property.
And that would have been, and West Tremont's ready to build. I mean, it's, it's ready to build, it's, everything's there, we just would have to get the, the building plan to accommodate its needs, et cetera. We obviously have added a counselor to every school, but I think this plan didn't have necessarily a counselor office, and maybe some other things, right, Heidi Joe? We also had estimated if we were to add on to Discovery, you know, again, eight to ten, what would that kind of look like for maybe eight classrooms and a gym? Anyway, so that was kind of what we talked about in January, based on information that we received. Now I'm going to talk about two and three, other than, I might just notice, note this number right here. Now, when we went to bond, we were estimating seventy-two million, and that would be land and a school that would hold eighteen hundred kids, right? And/or a school that would hold fourteen hundred. If this six-eight model, nine-twelve, two smaller middle schools, the numbers we were told is a much smaller number instead of a bigger number. Now, I just want you to giggle about this just a little bit, because what I'm about ready to show you is kind of, I want to show you this, and let me, let me get this a little bigger so you can see this. In the last two years, these are what different companies have told us the prices of buildings are.
Per square foot.
Per square foot. So back in twenty twenty-three, which is kind of what we did our numbers on to go to bond, was roughly three, three seventy-five if we were to build an elementary school, three seventy-five, three seventy-five. And then depending on, you know, what you made, a venue gym or a field house in, the numbers could be a little bit different that way. Cass School District, last June, when I talked to their second, secondary assistants, who were, you know, the director over secondary schools, he said they're building their middle schools right now at three fifty. So this was last summer, okay? So going into the bond, we're using numbers that fill this way. Hughes, they, they gave us some pretty big numbers. Three seventy-five to four thirty-three to four eighty-one, and that was on January second a year ago, year and a little bit ago. Middle schools, maybe three eighty-two. High schools, they were a lot larger for the price that they were talking about if we were to use them as a potential builder. DWA, just January, after we failed the bond, we just said, what, what's going on? Where are we, where do we go? Notice that they gave us at that time a square foot of three twenty-five for an elementary school. Notice that that's fifty dollars low than VCBO. Middle schools, three hundred plus. And then they said that a PE facility at Box Other High, a field house slash classrooms, et cetera, about five million dollars is what DWA said they could build, okay? Eight million for a venue gym. Today, superintendent asked the superintendent of Cass School District, Todd McKee, and he implied that his elementary schools right now were being built at three twenty to three forty, and that was part of their bond, which was a year ago before us, in two thousand twenty-three. So they were kind of building their elementary schools there. By the way, and this is going to, you're going to see where I'm going to get with this, Westland and Hogan, this is where they're looking like to add the PE spaces at the two high schools right now. A name.
Actually, Westland, we just got their numbers, they're like ten.
Oh, theirs was more like ten.
For the field, for the field house, but that's because we're adding in.
That wasn't Westland, that was.
Oh, that was Hogan, yeah, Hogan, the eight million, we're looking closer to ten because we're adding some classroom space that's needed.
So there you go, just... Yeah, so Hogan would be ten if they were to add a field and a gym, anywhere to eight point two to, to ten million dollars. Neil reported today that Washington School District is building elementary schools, and Karen, I'll share this document with you. This is nothing real crazy, this is just some history. Five hundred dollars is what they're building elementary schools now in down in Washington School District per square foot. VCBO said right now, we got on the phone with them today, they said right now, we're bidding elementary schools at four fifty, but I plan on a year from now, probably five hundred. I only bring this up, that within the last year and a half, we've ranged from three twenty-five to five hundred dollars in terms of a square foot to build an elementary school. You can see that the middle schools are kind of in this range, however, we haven't asked lately because we haven't, we haven't asked, but I do know this, everything at the high schools, at the two high schools with additions or building, they're bidding at four fifty. Okay? So you can see that Hughes, a year ago, said four fifty, they're probably close. VCBO, when we went to bond, their, their bid was three seventy-five, which is roughly seventy-five dollars less a square foot than what we're getting for our bids. So what you need to know is, one, if we were to pass the bond, if we would have passed the bond, I'm not sure our numbers are accurate. I don't know, depends on who would have got the bid, because you can see that they're all over the board with, you know, there's one thing about, I'm talking generally, and then there's another thing about the design has been made, we've gone out to bid, we find out what the tariffs are like, like, everything right now, when you're dealing with a CMG, is they're saying, well, this is what we think, but we'll see what the tariffs are like, what the tariffs are like. That's the new phrase after every potential bid, is that there'll be a tariff.
But I would just also, I mean, I think it's important to say, we got as many valid bids as we possibly could to base that.
Without actually having to, yeah.
But by the time we started to build, what that would look like.
So right now, the estimates with our current plan, with some adjustments, you know, out at the West Tremont School, and just to give you this column, right now, as it sits, the design at Box Other High is forty-eight million. Might be fifty, actually, if you just added.
That's, that's with the ten.
That's with the ten.
So when you say, when you set the high schools, that includes all the PE space and all the classroom space and everything?
That's as far, now, it's rough, nothing's been determined, there's still, you know, but that's...
Just construction.
And that's just construction.
Just build a building.
But forty-eight and thirty-six is kind of what the two are coming in right now. I want to point, and I hate to do this, but look at forty-eight and thirty-six, and you can do the math, seventy-eight million dollars. We were kind of looking at this. So we're about thirteen plus, fourteen million dollars over, not because the plan changed, but because the cost of building has already started to change from when we went to bond a year ago, or, yeah, nine months ago. Also, notice this right here. Also, notice this right here, 25 to 30 million dollars. That's what we've kind of been sold, that that's kind of the going rate. And if you go back here, we're now being told that elementary schools are 40 million dollars. And so when we have WT, that would be like the West Tremont, that would be the Lakeview, that would be the North Park, roughly 40 million dollars each. Again, it's really hard to know if they really are 40. You know, we could get one design, build all three the same. I don't know if there's a cost break. I mean, definitely if you use a plan that's already developed, it doesn't have to be tweaked, and it's just rebuilt, there'll be some cost savings. Right now, it's hard to know until we go out to bid and say, what does that look like? But based on the numbers of 450 a square foot, that's what 40 million is. If it's 500 a square foot, that's going to go to 45 million dollars. So these are kind of the actual numbers. Right now, Box Elder Middle School, Bear River Middle School, just want to go back as a little reminder here. We had told maybe 45 to 50 for the smaller schools, and now we're hearing 60 million. Now, 60 million is still less than our, our proposed 72 million. But it's still more than what we had originally thought when we started. Yeah, they're smaller. But we also know that, you know, when we were trying to think of how do we meet the needs of elementary, how do we accomplish as much as we can, this became kind of a sticking point. Adding on to Discovery, roughly 10 million dollars, adding AC. Again, you'd have to decide how many we go into. Do you still go into AC for everything but what might be ripped down in the next year, two, five, 10? Do you put it in no matter what? That's just a, that's a rough, 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 rough estimate. Now, what basically Neil talked about earlier is if you were to generate enough money to make 134 million dollars, that would give you the two high school additions and an elementary school in West Tremont, maybe adding on to Discovery. That's the 2783 is what it would cost. Your average homeowner.
But we also, in crunching the numbers, Neil has found that we couldn't recoup that much in truth and taxation. It would be around 125 million.
So that number, we think if we're trying to stay at 120, being able to do that project is a little high.
You have to take in from.
So.
Selling property or.
Because of the change in the caps on the capital rate, that amount now come feasible, at a, obviously, a greater cost to the.
Yeah, but maybe we could sneak it in, right?
We could do that, yes.
Another option, again, I want to hear from all of you and what your ideas are. We've just started to brainstorm lots of things with numbers that we think are as solid as they are in May 19th. You can tell that things are wiggling. But you can see three, if we were to build three elementary schools, two up north and one down here, why? Because we have 16 portables up north. So building one school, just that, is going to be 70% portables, not to mention the two schools that are currently there. But if you build a West Tremont and Lakeview, and we have the property for those, Lakeview could be over here just east of, or just west of ACYI on that property. North Park, we could build it on site in the back, or if we wanted to look at that nice Al Alpha Field that everybody thinks we own, that we don't.
Or even just renting it to stage, but.
Yeah.
One of the things we wanted to just speak to the reason behind this proposal or idea or suggestion, and we're open to more, is those are the two oldest buildings too, Lakeview and North Park. And we know that we need an additional elementary to take the overcrowding on impact off of the north end, but those two buildings are 1962, so they make up, they make up our oldest building.
Line 14, just move it down a little.
Another idea was we build the two elementary schools, maybe West Tremont and Lakeview. And maybe we start a Bear River Middle. Maybe we get one of the middle schools in. Again, that number's 140, based on the numbers, and Neil's now in the middle of crunching even more. But based on our numbers just an hour ago, about 120-ish was about what you could afford. Okay, another idea was we just build one elementary school. Karen's talked about this. We alleviate the stress up north. You could add AC, $9.97. It doesn't really help a lot of issues, but it does help the north and it provides 15, 16 portables that then could go to other elementary schools that will have to wait. And again, this amount is over the next 20 years, right? Now, if you think about 997, that's what's going to come off the books with the old bond in 2029-ish. I mean, I don't know how you compare 2007 amounts of what was the average home price versus 2029. I'm a little unsure on what that looks like. I guess we could figure that out. Another idea is you could just build the two elementary schools and you could start prepping the two high schools with parts of their transition to have ninth grade come over in the future so that you wouldn't have to do it later. That's another option.
Those two 8 millions are the field house and the venue gym, or not the venue gym, but a gym at the.
High schools.
At Bear River High.
A gym and the field house?
Yes, one at each.
So one would get a gym and one would get a field house.
Which you would need if you're going to go to a ninth grade. You have to have space to bring kids over to take a required PE class. Another option is just build two elementary schools. It does replace the two oldest schools, North Park and Lakeview. It doesn't really answer the overcrowding. You would just have two new schools but still have portables. So that potentially could be a problem. It could obviously solve two of our greatest needs. And again, AC was just thrown in there as a, a way to help our employees and our students be as comfortable as they possibly can. Finally, as you can see, we just kept on going and going. But the reality is, is we would love to hear this right here. And these are kind of firm numbers, as best as we can get. I don't know, maybe we'll get lucky and it's not 40 million. But that's what this is about. What Heidi Jo took off is if you were to have compensation for employee raises.
Yeah, and I should say, I'd like that back on.
Would you like it? I just didn't want it to.
Because that gives us, no, that gives us what the.
No, okay, we can take it back. I just, I was.
Just one second, we were almost done.
We just didn't want it.
We could also change that amount too. So for a 2% COLA for employees, it, it's $8. So if you do a 1% COLA for employees, it's $4. So we can play with those numbers to match whatever the proposed suggestions are. We've just seen a lot of sticker shock throughout the last year or two years into how much things are changing. I mean, going from 375 dollars a square foot being proposed for elementary schools in August of one year to January of the next year being told 480. That's why we felt like our bond plan was a good plan because the elementary schools were quoted to us as costing so much per square foot that we wanted to recoup that by using the intermediate schools and design. And then, it just fluctuates so much. I think it kind of goes into like, when we, when we can't get a bond to pass, it really does cost us so much more to try to piece together little projects. But it's so hard to.
Now, you know, if you look at line 13, these are the actual numbers. Notice that 1986, that number, you know, remember what that 220 was? 1994, that's the only one that is approximately what it would be when we said we're going to add.
And that's without the COLA.
And that's without the COLA. That's like scratching line 14. You know, adding two elementary schools, isn't, I mean, I wonder how the public will feel when it says 1828 to add two elementary schools when it was 1986 to do the whole package. That is what happens when you don't get the, and again, this is a learning curve, but you don't get the whole 20 years and the on and off and all of the bond situations. So, I'm really excited to be able to share phase one information with you. But we do know this, we do know that, you know, I'm, I'm of an opinion because of money. I still don't believe it philosophically. But I do believe because of money, our greatest need is elementary. Our greatest need is elementary. I do think if we ever go to a bond in the future, middle schools and high schools could be passed because everybody has a vested interest. If we go to bond, you know, I'm getting my elementary fixed, but the other elementaries don't need fixed. The chance of voting yes, it's a little harder if my kids aren't going to go to that school. So I think, I don't know how it works, but I think you either got to go potentially idea four, idea three, or seven, idea two. And it would, it would kind of start to bend our, and meet our elementary needs. Eventually, all those kids, especially in the north, are going to go to Bear River Middle and they're not going to fit. I mean, they're, they're going to get there and those numbers are going to need more portables. Now, we'll have them because they're going to have to leave North Park, but that's where they're headed, is Bear River Middle.
Which is one of the things that's kind of a compelling argument for our, for idea three.
Yeah.
You do, the two most impacted elementary schools get going on those. Bear River Middle School is the one that, Karina, you know, like if, creating a lot of problems by being on top of Bear River High School creates landlocked problems and has the sewer problems. I mean, so you could always start with one elementary on each end and a middle school. And then the next portion is the other middle school and some of the high school things. It's just a thought.
For Bear River Middle though, wouldn't that be like 70 million because we don't have land?
Well, I don't know how much land would cost. I would hope we could get rid of something to get that, like a land, sell some, buy some.
Currently, the enrollment on the north end is not as high as on the south end in the middle school. But it does make you wonder if with adding a full another elementary school, building that one a little bigger than splitting those two middle schools from Harris and, and Bear River later on would suit the needs more because that bubble is going to have to come through somewhere.
Plus, we're trying to sell some land, you know, once we get our Realtor onboard, South Willard.
So update on that is we have RFP out. It ends right around the middle of June when they convene a committee to review those RFPs submitted, to make a selection, and then propose a selectee to the board for a rule. So we're working on that.
I might add that remember in the bond, the middle schools were going to be able to host, they're going to be housing six through eight, three grades. So Bear River Middle would need to have a school right now of roughly 1,250 students. So you'd have to build it with the potential of growth of 1,400. However, if we say we're going to build this.
When you said that, was that still two middle schools or is that just?
No, that was just one. We went to bond, it was just one. But if we were to build a new middle school that doesn't need three grades, but really you just build it, and right now you would just build it for eight, nine, off campus, but you could build it for like 1,000. And then when you divide in, whenever the ninth grade ever gets there, then you would have the space to manage both and you would still be in a running of having plenty of growth in the future. So I don't really have, because this is a tough, this is a tough deal. When I looked at this number right here, every one of those.
We just also thought we could throw other ideas up there too.
Yeah.
And, and put the numbers to them and just get the conversation generating like ideas.
Well, and I think one of the things that's a little discouraging and, and makes it hard is we're saying, we're going to raise your taxes just like we were for the bond, we're going to give you half or a third of what we were going to do. And so when we come back at that, I mean, but something's got to be done. That's, that's the other thing. We could, I guess we could do nothing, but that doesn't seem like a reasonable, responsible, what's best for.
Speaking of nothing, man, energetic.
Sure.
Neil's working with a company and, and I think we'd probably, I don't know if we'd have to do an RFP to do a, a boundary project, demographics to. Neil, do you want to explain, explain that? And I'm talking about nothing, waiting for response from this company.
Is this kind of what Heidi was talking about?
Yes, demographics, exactly.
So there's a company called MGT and they're, they're a school consulting. They specialize in schools, consulting on facilities and boundaries and demographics. And they have, I actually sought them out because of, a company has another colleague of mine throughout the state recommended, hey, go look at these guys, they've done really good work for us. They also worked on the Alpine School District Boundary Split. That's going forth right now. And so they have, first they have a product that is a interactive boundary mapping. So they map all of our students on like a GIS map that we can then move school boundaries around and play with where, how that affects students and busing routes and all those things. So we would maintain a real-time map of our students. That's about $10,000 per year. I feel like that's a good value because the training is $12,000 plus the cost of the software, another $5,000, $6,000 per year. So for them that have their expertise and them do it for us, I think there's a value add. Number two is they have a demographer. So what they will do is they'll study our same student population that they have in the boundary mapping system using our December one data, our October one data, our in-year data to analyze student trends, to analyze uses of, ADM or membership literally does is a measure, is a measurement of demand. How much, how often students are in classrooms versus how, what is a point in time count for October one count. So they look at all those things and they plug it into their algorithm and their, for other places they've done this work to suggest to us, here's what, here's where you may have additional needs. On top of that, they go and they work with the different cities and counties and towns around us to study building permits, to study renter applications, and really give us a comprehensive map of where growth may be, where demographic may, may it occur across different demographic groups, so, you know, sex, age, ethnicity, migrant status, all those things. They give us a comprehensive picture over several years of where our needs are going to be in the county, in our district. So we can be better target where the needs are. The third product they have is a facility master plan study. Now, this is the most expensive one. What it does is it analyzes all our facilities, develops a maintenance schedule. It develops, it also studies our educational environments. To say we are doing well in this area, maybe we should consider programming differently in this area or we need more space in this area. Generally, those are our specific programs like Title I schools for special education or CTE. And develop this picture of what we're doing and what we need, what would be a better use of our spaces. They also tell us how much, based on our students and our building capacities, where we need more buildings, where we don't need more buildings, class spaces and all those things. They also will conduct community outreach and hold in-person hearings with, involve community members to develop community rapport with the set plan. That whole process takes about eight months and the, the cost is about $200,000. There are architectural firms who offer the same service. However, they don't specialize in education. They specialize in building utilization and management. So then you're missing the education component of that. And I think one architect firm I talked to, they're right around $180,000. And they don't include the outreach or any of the educational programming study. I feel is a good, things we can engage in if we want to push pause to then look at what our true needs are and develop a long-term future plan for building management and for building realization, construction, all those things. So that's another option superintendent said is pushing pause, going down that route to help us develop a long-term plan.
Now, remember pushing pause also is like a year ago, the costs were here. Now they're here, they could be there. Oh, tariffs, I think there is a scare out there and that could also, I, I just think we have to last.
And these numbers aren't final until we go to hard bid. We have a, a plan that the, been engineered by mechanical and civil architects and soil studies and all that, and they send out to contractors to bid on. These numbers are just estimates.
Estimates.
They could go up or down. And we won't know until we go through that process. And that's probably the hardest part about building, any kind of building is you don't know what your actual costs will be till you get hard written bids from your contractors, subcontractors to build the building.
Can we, can we do truth and taxation, say for 100 million? And not spend that money right away. I, I get that we don't, we don't have a lease revenue bond yet, but if we do truth and taxation, because we only have a couple of months to decide on that, but then we wait for a demographer to decide what projects we're going to do first, is that allowable?
Yeah, well, yes. We just, we, to taxation process is certainly we're going to do this and supporting the bond. That would be, it wouldn't go through the geo-bond schedule, it goes through our capital. So that's only for capital needs. We don't, by going to truth taxation, we're not locked in to do a lease revenue bond. We could do that for a long time to save the money to build a school. We're not locked into a bond.
We don't have to say exactly what we're spending it for when we do it.
That's correct.
And it can also go toward a two percent level.
Not, not that person.
Not the capital bond, sorry.
If we go to truth and taxation.
Yes.
We could do that now.
Yes.
Because we have to decide for truth and taxation by June thirtieth, right?
So I have to tell the state tax commission, the county auditor as well if we are going to go. What date, time, and place of the hearing, by June first. I have to tell how much, or given a proposed budget, that comes later in our June board meeting where we pass a tentative budget. Hold hearings usually in August, and those August hearings will then determine the outcome based on how the board is holding votes. So this, right now it's kinda the planning phases and we have flexibility to go either way. We could hold hearings in August and decide to do nothing, hold hearings in August, decide to, uh, go for a hundred million or more.
If we, do we continue, do we finish the high school designs? And then we just pay for them and hold on to them and tell the contractor, so sorry?
Well, so this happens a lot. So, uh, we were, had to go back and get another forty million dollars to help finish their high schools and junior highs that they recently built. Tuola, their Desert Peak, uh, high school has been in construction for about six years now. Same kinda situation and they quit pause because of funding.
At least they haven't done that.
Murray designed the school first. They designed the school first and then wanted to build later on. So that happens often. It's kinda hard to know how much you need till you go through the process. It's not like building a house where you have a contractor who's built the same house fifty, sixty times. And so he kinda knows his hard costs and what he wants to markup and he get, it gives you amount and that's what it ends up being. Or walk into an Ivory Homes and say, I want this home, build it for me. Uh, it's a little bit different and more customized and there is more risk and ambiguity in this process.
On that, are we okay to hear where we're at and so that everyone's up to speed on where that process is at or is that a waste of time? I don't, I don't.
Well, that's, that's what we've got Cory on the next week and combine these two, that's.
Is that okay? Can we just?
I think so.
Fill everyone in on where that process is at and what they've come up with.
Well, I just had a question with the people that you were saying about the two hundred million to hire them.
Two hundred thousand.
Okay, oh, that's great. Uh, that's a big difference. Uh, just curious, so does that count as a PR person if they're doing the outreach?
Um, no, their outreach is limited to designing a strategic plan for our buildings. It's not really outreach for any purpose that we see fit.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Most money goes into the research.
Yes.
And just that outreach.
Outreach portion like twenty-five thousand dollars is like two in-person hearings and some support materials, generating audio visuals and stuff like that.
So with, with that, that Neil's talking about, I've been here seven years and every year we've had a long-term capital committee. We renamed that to the Facilities Advisory Committee. We've had that meeting every year and we have a long-term capital plan in that. But we've always just gone off of, oh, let's look at what the buildings are and that one's the oldest, so that's gonna be the next one. And so that's on our five-year plan. And then the next oldest, that's on our ten-year plan. And we've just kinda gone by age. We've never actually had the hard data to make those data-driven decisions on where we're gonna go for the next twenty-five years. It's just been off of age of building, not necessarily where the population is. And we've had the data from, I, I can't remember the name, but it's Pan product at U of U.
Kansas State Garden Institute.
Yeah, and, and so we've just kinda always gone off of that. But I think this would give us some really hard data that we could then make some informed decisions on it. And, and not this whack-a-mole guessing, oh, that's the next oldest building. As far as our, our high schools go, we are still in the preliminary design phases. Nothing has gone, well, we've had civil engineers just doing some surveys of the property and geosurveys, but nothing's gone to mechanical and structural engineers yet to actually start doing the hard design process. Box Elder High School is a little bit further down the road as far as, um, the harder designs of which classroom types go where. Bear River High School, we're still in that phase of where would we maybe put that classroom lean, where would we maybe put a CTE building? Uh, we kinda know where a new PE facility might go. But we're, we're not in that hard, um, design document phase yet. So, if you're asking if we pushed pause, then there are a couple of ways you could think of it. You could just say, we're done, stretch it. And in the future, when we look at the high schools again, we go back out to RFP and get a whole new, um, team to work with. The other option that Neil and I had talked about is we could work with our district attorney and design a contract that would then give us the option to still use the design that started with the same team of architect and builders. I would not try to do that alone. I would say we'd want legal advice on how to design that contract so they'll hold. But I, I think, I, I would guess that we would still need to cover their costs of services rendered to this point. So, does that help?
Um, we have, we're looking at possibly using the West Tremont School designs from prior, right? Would it, would it be good for us to move forward with these designs so we had them?
So, when you look at, when you look at building designs from architects, all of them have designs that they've built before that are basically, like Golden Spike Elementary, that was a repeat design from another district that had built that multiple times. So you get a, your, your cost to the architects and engineers is less because it's already been done. And typically you have fewer change orders because a lot of the tweaks have already been pulled out. The West Tremont design was a custom design. So we already had to pay for that initially. We would need to pay for that design to go back to the engineers to come up to current code. Um, but then it could be ready to build. Now, Neil could speak more to this, but he's talked with the state. We could still go with that design because it was sole source designed for that property. We would need to go back out and get a builder again, contractor. If we were to then use that, and Neil, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but if we were to then say, well, we also wanna build that same design in two other locations in our district, I don't think that that is then sole source still. I think we'd have to go back out if we, and so that might be to our advantage. If we're gonna do multiple buildings, as we go back out and say, we wanna do three of them. So let's use, for instance, we say that we wanna build that, a certain design that we picked, we wanna build it twice. Well, the West Tremont property, that's ready to go. If we were to get an architect and contractor, they, they would just have to get that plan ready to go and they could then put it out to bid. And at the same time, if we were to build on the west, on the property west of ACYI, that piece of land is not ready to go. We would have to do some civil site work to it to get it prepped and ready for a building. But let's say that that took four to six months. You could piggyback off of the same contractors. And when you do all the concrete and flat work in Tremont, then maybe that same contractor has to bid to give us a discount to get both schools. And then they do the concrete flat work and it just piggybacks off of each of those that one is about six months, four to six months behind. And you could get some savings that way. Some value engineering as far as ball grade. I don't know. Neil, do you wanna give more detail on that?
Cory, before you move on, how many, how many students did the West Tremont Elementary design?
So that design, it has a very similar setup to Golden Spike as far as the, where the kitchen's located and, uh, gymnasium, and then, and then the, the dining hall, commons hallway. And so we've said, really that needs more space in that dining area and that common main hallway. And so we'd wanna add some space to that. So there, the guess is it would be about ninety thousand square feet for that building.
And combined with students.
So that, so the students, we're working with Heidi Jo, we're, we're guessing that that would be about seven hundred and fifty students because some of the spaces.
Cap, right?
Yeah, that'd be the cap because some of the, so that was designed in two thousand seventeen and there have been a lot of changes. We have a lot more support staff in these elementary schools that need a space, so we, I, I think that that building was designed for like eight to eight hundred and fifty kids. But we would need to absorb back some of the space for support. So we're seeing about seven fifty. And there are currently, or will be this summer, sixteen portables, possibly seventeen portables between McKinley and North Park.
How many students does that equal?
A lot.
You turn twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah, you get twenty-five per building and so, what is that, twenty-five times seventeen?
Because most of those are fourth and fifth graders, aren't they? Isn't that what we do is put the under grades in them?
Do we have any DLI and portables at North Park? And sometimes the DLI classes run bigger, a little bigger, twenty-five.
I guess my question was, are we as far into the design process of the high schools as we are right now? Would it, would it behoove us to finish that process out so that we had a firm design even if we didn't build it right now?
So, these are custom builds.
Right.
And the kinda rule of thumb for a custom build or a custom design by an architectural firm is roughly six percent of the estimated construction cost. So if these are thirty-five, thirty-six to forty-eight million dollar builds, then we'd say take six percent of that and that's roughly what we, what we'd pay. Is that correct Neil?
Yeah, it's like four or five million design costs. Um, that does not include your CMGC fee, which is another million change per school, and it does not include, um, contingencies, which can be as high as three million per school. We didn't even need that, but that's what you make into your budget. And then I think what we call FFNE, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, which is another probably six million combined.
But if we just finish the design, what will we owe them?
Are you saying it's four to five million?
Yes.
Four to five million to each?
Four to five million on design costs, another two million for the CMGC fee. So the contractor's working with the architect. For their expertise, we're gonna pay about a million dollars and for them to manage the project. And the additional six million dollars to put all furnishings inside the buildings.
No, they're not doing that part.
They're saying just to.
We're saying to this point, to pay them out.
We don't.
Just to finish the design.
It, it would be them billing us.
It would be them billing us because that four percent is for the architects to manage that process and consult with the contractor through the entire build. So we're not gonna pay, paying for that. Uh, for illustrative purposes, I think we paid around eight hundred thousand dollars to the CBO for a West Tremont building. Um, just to design it. And I think if we were to build that same building, we would owe them another one point four million dollars.
That initial cost was fourteen million for the build, as you compared.
So what we owe them through the whole managed process through occupancy really depends on how much it costs to build the building in the end.
Right, because that's a percentage.
And that's a running total. It, it, it would kinda happen here now, but we've pitched pause, that number's just gonna go up higher and higher, I believe, as the cost to build increases.
There's just been so much time and work going to the design so far that you kinda hate to just throw that away.
For West Tremont, we would have to re-engage.
Just for the high schools.
The high schools, we're not very far in. We're just on a.
Yeah, but for these ladies that have gone to meeting after meeting and had to work out schedules of their families and their work in order to be there and do the RFPs twice, I think, you know, that's just something that while we're not far in from the financial perspective, there's a lot of time and emotions invested.
And there's some exciting things that are being discussed for these schools, so if.
Why I say we're not far in because we still have to do soil engineering, we still have to do structural engineering, mechanical engineering.
And the soil is being done right now, right? Those tests at Bear River is being done right now.
Yes.
Are there two different companies for the two different soils?
Yes.
And you say we're further at Box Elder than Bear River because Bear River's a little bit more complicated? Or not, like the assumption that?
We have, we have different architectural firms and the one, and the different architectural firms have different personalities. And the firm at Box Elder High School, um, really jumped on it. And I'm not gonna say one is better than the other. It's just a different.
A lot of those classified is the, the one at Bear River came in and met with us and said, what do you need? What do you need? And at Box Elder, they came in and did some research, talked to principal, and they came with a plan right from the get-go. So that's kinda what he's talking about, how, how different they are, so.
I've been surprised that there, we've always talked that Box Elder wouldn't be as expensive because it was a more simple fix.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that because.
But we've said, that's been said prior.
But there are gonna be more students there. I mean, the school's gonna be four hundred more students. So just bringing in a bigger class is gonna have naturally be more now.
Am I upping the night? Wasn't that just?
I, I thought I'd.
That was proposal in the RFP by someone. But to your point, but to your point, it was supposed to be a little easier because other than the CTE, there wasn't a lot of destruction.
Right.
But to that point, but I always knew that Box Elder was gonna be more expensive because you had to bring in more students instead.
Am I, I don't wanna like give up because we've had, like, stop the design process because we have, are having good conversations, but I'm wondering how far in the future we think a third high school really is. And if it's not that far, would we, would it be better to leave each high school the size they are? And just plan for a third one? Because if we build a third high school, we don't need Box Elder and Bear River to be.
It would be similar to what we're talking about for middle schools, it would be that same.
And I think we could guess on that, but honestly, the companies that, the company that Neil's talking about bringing us in, that's gonna give us the information, right?
So that's my hangup on saying, let's finish the design maybe. If, I, I just have no idea how far that third high school is.
I don't think it's in the next twenty years. Part of the problem is where Box Elder is located in the south. We're as far, I mean, if Willard explodes, Willard, I mean, just its location. And in order to get another high school, it has to take Corinne.
Yeah.
And it has to take.
Half of Brigham.
And where the high school is, it's almost like you're gonna move people out. So that would have to fill in pretty extensively. I think you could have a little of the south of Tremont. Some of them could come a little easier, but where the, the high school's located on this end, I don't know, there's not a lot of bodies. Like, are you gonna move people to Bear River City when they're a mile away from the high school? Not that we didn't do that at Fielding and Garland. I'm trying to throw that out there. But it would seem really hard to say, I'm going to go leave my city. So really Brigham City. And then when you just look at Corinne, Honeyvale and Bear River City and maybe Elwood, I'm not sure that number gets us to a high school number.
Then I guess my next concern, and we can maybe talk about this tomorrow, Wednesday too, is the design that we're looking at for Box Elder is for what we have now. It really doesn't have room for growth now because we filled in the third floor. So we need to figure that out and that cost for Box Elder will just go up. There's no room for growth in the current design.
It sounds like we're kind of trying to hit a moving target. And it sounds to me like with what Neil talked about, about the demographer, that might help us put a little bit more stability in a tar- target or at least, I don't know. Am I-
I, I feel like that's true for the elementary schools. For the high schools, we have two high schools in fixed locations. We're not going to have to build one anytime soon. Frankly, we can't afford a third one. I think the Westfield in Leaver County that is built over three hundred million dollars. We factor in the filled house, a brand new school, three hundred and fifty thousand square feet from scratch. That's what it costs to build a new Box Elder or a new Bear River.
Is Westfield a five A size school or are they going to be a six?
They will be a five A size school. They started out as three eight this year, moving to four.
Moving to five this year.
They were four.
Four.
Go to five.
We go to five.
Are they nine twelve? Are they ten?
No, ten, ten twelve.
Ten twelve.
Weaver's model is ten twelve.
I have a question. I mean, this isn't one of the ideas that are proposed, but I don't know if it's even feasible or like a book, but just it's one of those things that there's the money and then there's the philosophical issue of where do we want our kids and what's best for their educational outcomes and what we're thinking. And so we've kind of talked about, we think the six, eight, nine, twelve model is now if we go just build elementary schools, then we're pushing that down the road further and we're costing more and doing things like that. Um, and I know with our district, we have a north end and a south end. Like, what if we just did the north end of the district first? Like, is that, I mean, would that be just a total non-starter? I mean, if you put like-
I think that is one of those up there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Like, did you like do like the Bear River High School, the West Tremont Elementary?
I see what you're saying.
And move Bear River to, I mean, I don't know.
Two middle schools and six through nine and not do it at Box Elder.
Finish what you're saying, we'll put it on here. So you're saying-
So I'm saying-
Bear River High, uh, thirty-six million.
Yeah, and West Tremont Elementary at forty.
Keith, Keith's doing it. Sorry, I, yeah. I just put that.
And that's what I'm saying. We'll just, and that doesn't address-
And that's the same thing we did earlier with the middle schools. Okay, and then the middle school, but not do North Park right now? Not worry about that?
But not do North Park. I don't know where that seventy, take that.
No, if, if we were going to go to a, a nine, you know, six, eight, then that would be sixty. If you were-
But if we did, but, but we were facing it. Remember, we were getting to the high school first and then middle school later. So if we just do the first phase-
She's talking about doing idea one on the north end.
Yep.
And then the next day, I-
So just doing the thirty-six and the forty.
Yeah, so I just put it on idea nine.
Yeah, so take the six and the off, sixty.
So don't do the middle school.
Because that would have to be another like phase. So again, it's the same idea of we're not going to do, we're going to keep old middle school, keep the Harris, like if we, if, so we build a high school. So it's pretending like we have half the district that we have.
One concern is just like you.
Well, that's, and that's where-
Because, you know, Corey's been working on the portables, the two portables. We're trying to get out at Lakeview to hold them off until we can get down the road enough. And that would be with the addition of Discovery to get down the road enough that like, everybody just hang tight, we're coming. We really are, you know, um, he's on revision five. And do we have a, an acceptance now?
We have a, we have an acceptance with the contingency that we have twenty feet between the two sets of portables. But that means that the only way that we can put more portables at Lakeview is if we move all the existing portables to meet fire code. And we estimate that would be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Plus, that doesn't include like playground space. We'd be taking out their little jungle gym and their basketball court and probably should do something to help with playground equipment for the next five years.
Can we do the addition to the Discovery and-
Yeah, why not put ten on Discovery then? On idea nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On idea nine, no.
Oh.
Wrong one, sorry. Too many ideas up there.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, it's not ideal and it's not good. I'm just trying to think long-term, where, where's the direction? Like, if we're just build an elementary and then build another elementary and then like, we're going to be stuck in these same cycle of then we're not going to have enough money to do that. Not, is this the direction we want to go? Now, I know that people on the south end are going to be like, what's up with us? And I represent the south end and I partake in some of that. So I don't know if that's the best idea. I'm just saying financially and philosophically, that's a, and, and maybe if it's where the, I mean, they're four A versus five A, there's a different classification. It's a, we can kind of see how that, because Logan, Cash, all those schools that they play are in a nine twelve model. Not that we have to do what they do, but I'm just saying, and I'm just going back to that one, the last board meeting, one of the public comments was we don't have to treat both ends of the district the same. You know, do one this way and one that way. I don't know if that's necessarily what we want to do forever, but-
That'd be ten.
Yeah, no, it's ten.
Line J or column J, that'd be ten, yeah.
So that's just-
As they have a design.
Okay.
See what?
So could we look at doing a, um, tax constraint, what we're willing to ask the taxpayers for and then seeing what plan we've bitten there? I mean, being a, a school system, we don't generate money. The only money we get is what we take out of taxpayers' office. And so I think that, at least for me, that's where it starts. What am I willing to go and ask my neighbor who just lost his job? What am I willing to go ask him to input? And constrain it by finance and then see what we can do within what we're willing to ask. And like, according to our, um, Board Book Handbook, it says that we represent the people.
Which is the taxpayer, but it is also the students and teachers.
But it's the taxpayer pays it.
And that's the students who suffer with-
But we hope that we can help the taxpayer.
Right.
We, we have to sell the taxpayer on that. Just like there's things that I wish my kids wouldn't do, but they still have their agency. I feel like if we keep taking money from the taxpayer, we're taking away their agency. Even if what we're saying might be better for them, that is, that's their money. We should try and, we should try and help sell it to them, but that's what they're buying. That's what they, that's who, that, who supports us financially.
Wade, what did you?
Well, I put in my two bits. I, I'm sorry I have to leave in about five, ten minutes, but, um, I really like the phase one. I, I, everybody's worked hard on that. I really like that. I like everything about it. I think it just fits to me, the way my thinking is. And I would like to see, I mean, how much it would cost the taxpayers and all to do phase one, okay? Um, like we had previously planned. As far as the two hundred thousand for the other company, I would rather put that two hundred thousand into phase one. Then, because I think we're always kicking the can down the road. And I think we should, I, I think it's a good plan. I don't think it's a bad plan and I don't think we should just throw it out. I think it's good. And yes, we have to look at taxpayers, but our bottom line is that we have to do what's best for kids. And I just feel that it's best for kids, what phase one is. Because it helps in secondary, it helps in elementary. And that's just my personal take on it. I am a team player, so I will do whatever the, the board decides and I will support that. But that's just my take on it.
Can I paraphrase what you said to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying? So you're thinking like, what's up here for idea one? Has the work of the board into it, the direction that you've been headed? Go that direction. It's more than what Neil is saying we could technically cook right now, but sell property and lose reserve to make it happen.
To make it work. Um, and maybe we can't do all of it, but I would hope we could do a lot of it.
I guess the part I wanted to clarify is, would you want to look at the selling of property and what's in reserve to make it happen? Or do you want to just limit how much you do?
I would be good with that.
Okay, thanks. Wade, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're suggesting.
With that, I really like the idea of ninth grade, moving to high school. When I was in high school at Box Elder, we had ninth grade there. We survived and we did well. Um, and, and I, I just think it works better with the curriculum and everything, how it is now. The sports and everything, I just think it works better. And I think that's how it's going to be for a long time. I just don't think it's going to be changing anytime soon. So that's just my take on it. But whatever the board decides, I will support because we're, we're, we're a team here, so. Okay?
I really liked Ben's letter on why ninth grade should be there for CTE. And I think there are a lot of kids choosing trades instead of college, so that would be impactful for them now. But Neil, was there, you said there was two hundred thousand, but was that, that was like the high package of the demographer. Wasn't there like a lower one that was like?
Twenty, ten thousand, ten thousand.
So ten thousand for the boundary study and the boundary mapping tool. Twenty-five thousand for the demographer study per year for a three-year contract or thirty thousand dollars for a one-year contract. They do not recommend a one-year contract for the, uh, so they can, if you have three-year contract, you can establish a trend. Where a one year is a snapshot of time. And I feel like we're, we're a changing community where we have lots of construction going on, both residential and commercial, that a one-time snapshot would do us a disservice and kind of lock us into what's, because our decision-making process is always backward looking. Uh, make sure, we have to see what's happening before we can kind of make a decision. So I feel like having a three-year snapshot as we move through these phases would give us a better idea of what we would be doing rather than just looking at last year's data. And then the final one, the study of all the facilities, that, and, and educational spaces and programming, how we use all those, that has, I think it went down to like eighty-six thousand just to the bare bones, basically study facilities. And that's it. No educational programming, no additional, um, uh, community support or it, or different outreach options. It was just study your buildings and that's it. And basically comes up with a, a master plan of maintenance for existing facilities.
So if we just did the boundary stuff, we would be seventy-five thousand over three years?
Yes.
So is there, to keep, like, Corey, you, from what I gather, from you, you thought that would be beneficial for us because of the way we've been doing things for the past, to build our five, ten, fifteen-year plans, right? But I still, that doesn't mean we have to kick something down the road to start this now to benefit us in the future, right? I mean, we don't have to X this whole, these ideas or, or phase one to get that company working for us.
We do, we do not. So I think that company's work is very valuable when it comes to planning for elementary growth, what we do, what we need in middle schools and in major schools if we go with this nine twelve plan. I think it's valuable going forward to create a long-term plan of what we're going to do. Because this plan, not this one, but the other one we had presented here, long-term, it's a fifteen, twenty-year project. This would help us align our ideas over fifteen, twenty years with professional experience and consulting, uh, outcomes to help us, I guess, validate what we want to do is the right direction to move over the long term.
And as the leadership team, are you in consensus with that?
I, I am. I, I think being able to say, hey, we know, you know, it's like Keith said, if in twenty years we build a third high school, so be able to do this, get the demographics information, if, that would make sense if we can afford phase one. And I think part of what phase one helps is Neil had it figured on point zero, zero, two, five. And we just found out it's point zero, zero, five and that-
Three.
Three, thank you. That point zero, 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 five is a lot of money, right? Isn't that, yes.
Yeah. It's like, um, four million dollar here.
So that, that is pretty substantial. I mean, to be able to handle this one thirty-four, I mean, I think we could do with that. Neil might-
Just so much to ask the taxpayers.
That is a ton.
Yeah, well, I think what's the, the, when I said it before, and I'll say it again, is just when we went to bond and said, we're getting this much and it's going to cost you this. Now we're going to say, it's going to cost you this and you're going to get this much. It's, it's not that we were being deceptive. I, I kind of feel like that though. I feel like I wasn't being honest, but I don't think we were not being honest with what we were saying. We were doing with the best numbers we had. But things changed.
The structure changed.
And the structure, when you, when you go out for a bond and you can amortize it over twenty years versus do this lease revenue, it just flat out costs more. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, I will say that the numbers presented today on the cost to support this construction are, it's based on a straight line depreciation, it's straight line expensing. It's, you know, the same amount year after year. Well, we know that our financing is dynamic. We have some CRAs, Community Reinvestment Acts that are going to come off the books. That are going to bring three to five million dollars of new revenue into our, us. One and a half is in twenty thirty. We have a GEO bond that's coming off the books. That's another three million dollars. That's a six million dollar swing in twenty twenty-nine. So there's other things that factor in that will bring the cost down, but right now on the, without getting into all the details and complexities, how do we account for that? How do we determine what that value is and the cash flows of that? Takes a little longer to generate that picture. I think we can have that picture more clear in the month ahead of time. But for today's discussion, this is what the numbers look like.
Can I speak to that a little bit too, too? Because I'm feeling the same thing as you. That's really scary. The numbers that we put together that were given to us from VCBO for that bond are listed under August first of twenty-three. When we got new information from Hughes Construction on the numbers that are shown there in January of twenty-two or twenty-four, sorry, that was when we were like, we really have got to move forward with this bond. Things are getting more expensive. So the other thing that we had to do with that is we had to rank them in the order of when they would happen. Hoping that we were going to be able to use what Dave had been putting into reserve and the sale of property to finish the projects that were further down, knowing full well that we may not be able to get to some of those based on how the funds fluctuated. It's interesting that from the time that Hughes gave us that number and then the numbers we got from DWA, we were, I mean, there's just, they go up and down so much. One of the things we did say to the taxpayers is, and this is not me advocating for go forward or don't, it's just, they said, what happens if this doesn't pass? Like, what's the next plan? We said, we, we go back, we relook at the needs, we try to evaluate them. And one thing we know for sure, it's going to cost more. The further we kick the can down the road, the more it's going to cost. So that's not a ceiling for one thing or another, but Tiffany did say, what does the leadership team think about it? And it's almost like you think Keith is elementary and I'm secondary because what I think about it is, we've invested a lot of time in this plan and looking at what to do for the high schools. We know that educationally, the best thing for our students is nine through twelve. And that supports a lot of different things. But there, is there variation in the support and belief of that from our taxpayers and our parents? Absolutely. But educationally, getting there has a lot of benefits for our students. And while that sticker prices a lot, so gets a lot of those initiatives done really early off the cuff. Um, and from the first, I felt like it was really clear what we needed to do with secondaries based off of the plan and, and making the best use of the buildings and replacing those that need done. I, I still don't know for sure what needs to happen with elementary, which is why I've been proposing and suggesting a demographer. Because I don't have all the answers with elementary. I mean, we have thirteen elementary buildings instead of six. It's pretty clear whether you go, which middle school you go to or which high school you go to. It's not so clear with elementary. Um, and recently it has been suggested, do we look more at elementary schools and building those? And I think when you, you look to just prioritizing elementary schools, if that were the direction you go, we have to have an additional elementary school on the north end because we can fill that right now today on just the north end. And Fielding or Garland, which just a couple of years ago, we moved a lot of those kids to Fielding. They don't have a single space for out, out of classroom creps or they, they have gym out of the classroom, but they have to push in music and computers and all of those creps and so does Fielding. After restructuring and designing, I mean, we have that at a lot of schools on the south end too, but to me, it feels like we either have to do three elementary schools and then look at the middle schools and high schools later on, or we need to do the plan that we've been talking about. and then look at the middle schools and high schools later on, or we need to do the plan that we've been talking about since December and roll forward with it. But I, I don't know how to make all of it happen with the money we have. And I don't like increasing the cost for taxpayers. When I first started three years ago, I was just like, oh man, we are really behind on what to do for elementary buildings. They're already overcrowded and I knew preschool was just being put in them. Kindergarten was being rolled out for all-day kindergarten and that, I was already starting really far behind on elementary. I hate to see us get further and further behind on this plan because the costs are fluctuating. I don't know what the answer is, but that's how I feel about it. Like I will support whatever the board comes up with. Cause I just know there's so many needs and we can't meet them all at once and maybe not even in phases. It's a lot to roll out in phases.
Is there any possibility of using reserve and selling property to get nearly enough to pay for Lakeview as well?
No.
In idea one?
Because Lakeview's $40 million, replacement's $40 million. We have $22 million in capital reserve right now. And we have about $12 million in operational reserve right now as well. We can't deplete those all the way to zero and still build the school.
Do you mean instead, do you mean instead of doing the addition to Discovery? You're saying with the two high schools, do West Tremont and, and Lakeview?
Yes.
Idea one, switch it up for that.
Take Discovery off because we would reboundry and we wouldn't.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what you're asking. I know, but we, but we took off the other plan. That's what I'm getting at.
The answer is though, is no, we don't, we don't have enough money to pull it off. That would take care of all reserves down to zero and sell property to be able to self-finance a new, a, a new Lakeview and a new, uh, West Tremont elementary.
So if, I'm just looking at those numbers across the bottom. Which ones are out of our reach completely? Like the 270, I can, we can shut that one down, right? That's not gonna happen.
This is on the edge of right here.
By the way, do you know what I did at idea eight?
No.
Idea eight is we don't add, we don't move ninth grade to the high school.
Yeah.
We just build two new middle schools and we build three elementary schools. That's what that one is. So we just keep the same model, replace, now notice 270 is not 220.
Yeah.
But that would be, that would be, if we were to say, you know what, let's just keep it status quo and replace our four old facilities. That's what that number is. You can't do that in one. You'd have to do it in two, maybe three.
Well, and I, I think that's where I'm looking at when I see something, I think that was a good thing to show because I think we have to decide what is our direction as a board. What do we really feel like needs to happen? And we have to consider all the financial implications as well and cut back if we need to. But if we're just gonna say, let's build an elementary and another elementary and do this, I mean, we're just, it's kind of Band-Aid patchworking things and we're in the same situation that we're currently in. And so I'm trying to think, just how can we go the direction we feel is the best, but yet doesn't overburden our taxpayers, which we all are taxpayers, I, you know, and like.
I hate for you to, don't take that off. The numbers are different as like, we're not loving the idea.
All right. I just don't want it, delete it.
I have conditional formatting on there that made the cell blue, so I wanted to change it to black. The red I put unless I.
So and like idea 11, that's out of our range.
So your, your range is right here. 140 and below is what we can actually finance.
Now why I did idea 11 is that's how much adding ninth grade to the high school and adding two elementary schools, a building and a middle school at Bear River end. That's 11 is if you were to build a whole North End, that's how much that one's gonna be.
And Lakeview.
And that would be on idea 12.
What's the 60 million for North Park?
Oh, this is supposed to be 40 here and 60 here and delete this.
There you go. I think there's one other thing that I hope you maybe already understand, but I think it's important that you do understand is that if we did 140, that means we are paying about seven, Neil, seven million a year, eight million?
Uh, 140, we'll, we'll higher than that, be closer to 10 and a half.
Okay, and the fact of the matter is, is we're paying that for 20 years. The only way we can go to truth and taxation again is if that number at the top goes from 7.5 to 8.5. On that previous chart that had, the valuation of the. What I'm saying is we've mortgaged out our future, our, you know, the most we get until we have, you know, and he said, we've got some CRAs coming off the books, we have growth. You know, there's, there's a variety of things, but that's, I think that's something you need to take into considerations.
Yeah, no, I agree. Idea one.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can I get your comment?
You bet. I think we can all hear you.
Okay, I can listen to this discussion and, and it's really good.
My feeling about, uh, direction where we are ahead is, you know, we went to, to bond and bond failed. And I think at this point, what we need to do is prioritize the highest need. We need, as a unit of administration, um, need to think about what is our greatest need right now? And I heard Keith talk about the elementary schools. I thought, um, in discussions we've had before, that the greatest need is overcrowding at the middle schools. And I want to understand, Keith, what your thoughts are on that. But anyway, that's just my input is, is what is our greatest need? And what, what do we need to, um, do first?
That's a great question. Let me just add this. It is true that the middle schools are crowded. You just have to walk in a break and get up the hallway, get away from the office where it's a, it's a tri-hall where you can actually space, but get up the hallway. It is definitely crowded. My point though is, is if we go idea one, to me, it's a money thing. It's not about a philosophy thing. If it was, money was not the issue, I would definitely add to the ninth grade and build the middle schools and we would get into a 6, 8, 9, 12 model. I guess my concern right now is if we were to spend $78 million, which is already $18 million over what we thought back five months ago, and that an elementary school would be 25 million, you can see that you're close to being able to build two elementary schools. Um, and I guess my thought is, is, I know this is gonna sound terrible, but those dang middle school kids have survived for 30 years, uh, walking in crowded hallways. And they probably could survive for another, I don't know when that's going to be. But we have 16 portables in the North End. And there, that's a problem. And we have six at Lakeview. If we were to build the new elementary schools, all of a sudden our elementary issue, at least case six, is somewhat, um, at least being addressed significantly. I personally think if, whether it's this board or whoever makes up the board uh, in five years from now and the bond comes off, you could go to bond, but you have to go to bond with secondary schools. And I think the reason for that is everybody has to go through a secondary school, not an elementary school. So if we were to handle some of our elementary needs now and then in 2029, when the bond comes off the record, our '07 bond, I guess at '09, we voted in '07, that you could potentially go to bond, which would generate money not in truth and taxation like Steve just brought up. Steve's saying if we maximize, then we don't have actually the ability to go to another phase. We'll just, we'll just sit here. And so, um, I guess that's my point is, to me, Brian, which is a great question, to me, it's a money issue. It's not a philosophical issue in terms of what's driving me. If the numbers were down where I thought they were, where I was told just five months ago where they were, that's a different approach. So to me, my feeling is right now, I'm okay. I think we gotta get all the information. If, I feel bad for our employees and I know I'm one of them, I'm not feeling bad for me necessarily. But I'm feeling bad for our employees who got a .5 COLA. Our ESP's got a one, our teacher's got a .5, and our administrator's got a .5. And so if we can get a little bit of a COLA for them to let them know that, hey, you're hanging here with us while we're trying to figure this out, get the demographer, get some information and just go to truth and taxation. There are, there are districts that go to truth and taxation every year. So we could go, see what it's like, get some good information and then make a decision. Are the numbers gonna go up? Yeah. Will we know what the tariffs have done? Yeah. We may know exactly what it looks like. Maybe we won't. But these numbers are soft. We already know that. So I think buying some time, maybe we just, and I feel bad, Karina uh, is gonna lead negotiations tomorrow with us. And we're gonna have to go to the employees tomorrow and offer a COLA. Okay, um, right now, if we do nothing in truth and taxation, Neil says 2%. Now 2% is better than .5. It's gonna be two less than Washington, two less than Alpine. You know, there's other districts that are going to be a lot more than us, but that's okay if that's what we end up doing. Or maybe you say, we're gonna go truth and taxation and raise it one. And just, and then buy some time, get our ducks in a row and then here comes December and we say, okay, we've had plenty of time. We can't just keep kicking. But we gotta get a, a plan in place and say, let's go phase one, phase two, phase three.
Well, Keith, I, I see what you're saying. I don't have much confidence in going to bond. I really, really don't have much confidence and, and so, I mean, I, and I don't want to max out our mortgage either. I don't want to say, let's go to, but if we build those three elementaries, we're about the same as we would be with idea one. I mean, it's not much different. And so when I look at that, I'm like, well then what, do we just do two elementaries? I mean, at what point, I think our greatest need, I think, I do think the elementaries need to be addressed. And that's why when I say that, what if we just do one end of the district? Is that really a no, is that a non-starter for?
I, I.
My.
Do you think that?
Well, I have a question.
I don't know. I'm just wondering.
Are Lakeview and North Park, if we get the numbers down, still functional? I know they're really old. So is the middle school. If we get the numbers down, are they functional? So would it make, like, we're building West Tremont, would it make more sense just to build a West Brigham City that Lakeview stays open, North Park stays open? Cause West Tremont and North Park were staying open, right?
Yeah, part of the reason for that is because the number of, the growth up there is just so extreme. Like you have 10 portables at North Park, right?
Next year.
Seven, well, that, one for the 11 next year.
We have nine there right now.
Okay, so 10 next year and then seven at McKinley next year. But down here at Lakeview, we'll, we're going to seven and then Discovery has two.
Well, Discovery will need at least two more kindergarten classes in the next couple of years based off of, there's three age kids in the other.
Building would like free, Garland would like free. So when we add all of that up, that building, one building's already full plus replacing a building, right? Because of how old it is and to increase the enrollment of students in that building and add flexibility for programs. And yes, Discovery is increasing similarly to, that's what.
But if we just build West Brigham City, West Tremont and we redo boundaries, we could fill them probably and leave Lakeview open as well.
To, yes, to you, to your point, your question. Whenever we add a portable to a school, we're not adding any infrastructure. No additional restrooms, no additional gym space. And so Discovery only has two portables, but they already struggle to provide the, because they have one gym. And you look at North Park and Lakeview and McKinley, so many portables there. That's just a bigger strain on the infrastructure of the building. If we get rid of the portables, then we have a better chance of getting a little bit more life out of that building. I mean, there, it, it's not gonna change the plumbing issues, but it puts a lower strain on that building, if that's what you were asking.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I, I can't decide how I feel about doing one.
About, you know, Julie and Tiffany, when you said, what if we just want one end? I do believe that eliminates a potential bond in the future. Like that just absolutely says that will never be an option because.
So we'd only be bonding for one.
You gotta have both ends. But to your point.
Keith, I didn't understand what you said. Did you say that in your, in your view, uh, we haven't going to bond? We cannot address the, the overcrowding of the middle schools? And so really all we can do at this point is go to truth and taxation, try to raise some money to address the overcrowding at the elementary schools with the hope that in the future, we can go to bond and address the overcrowding at, at the, at the middle schools. Is that, is that what I'm hearing you say?
I, basically yes. Here's the reality. The overcrowding of Bucksel and Middle School is bad, but the age of the building is worse. The skinny hallways, the low ceiling, just trying to have kids have a great experience there is a problem. But could it last? It could last. It, is it 50 years old? 60 years old? Yes, it is. It's 60 years old, so.
Which is a very good vintage.
What's that?
Which is a very good vintage.
That's right. Very good. Oh, wait a minute. Sorry. There, there may or may not be someone in here that went to that school.
No, I was meaning the 16.
16-year-old.
The 16-year-old. Very good. Well, I'm, I'm just knocking on the door, so. But anyway, my thought is, is we have an immediate need. We know that we're overcrowded. Guess how many portables are at Bucksel and Middle School? Zero. And the reason is, is we've shrunk five classrooms on the inside. We've taken spit and cut them in half. We've taken every nook and cranny. We've eliminated all computer labs. And so that's why there's not five portables at Bucksel and Middle School. So is it crowded? Yes. Does it look like it? No, it looks exactly like it did for the last 15 years. Bear River Middle, it has three. Well, this year, just with some, I don't know what they're doing, they're gonna go down to two, which would.
We're, we're pulling two.
You're pulling two. You're pulling two, so. But eventually, when the growth of all of these kids get up to there, that number's gonna have to be bigger. So we are gonna have to address it at some point. But I think the immediate need, if you're just gonna prioritize overcrowding, see, Bucksel and Middle School, Bear River Middle were aged and some overcrowding, but not in any way like elementary schools.
Something you just said, like, made me think. You said have those kids have a good experience. At the middle school, they're only there for two years. In the elementary school where it's overcrowded, they're there for five or six if they went to preschool there.
And you've also done all of those things Keith's saying with the elementaries and then have the portables, you know, the combining.
They're not going through puberty quite like the middle ones are, but to your point, they are there just for a couple of years.
However, like our science labs at our middle school, they can't plug in more than like three telescopes or something. Or microscopes, sorry, without, you know, they just can't. It's, it's pretty ridiculous.
Yeah, it is.
I have two thoughts. I, I really would like to see a number that everyone's comfortable with and how that would work in phases. If we max out and can't go to truth and taxation again for a long time, that kind of wrecks the ability to phase things, right? Did I understand?
Well, it depends on how much growth we have. That's, yes.
It's a gamble.
Well, I want us to have future ability to keep, keep moving forward, not just be.
I will say this, when I came here, I'm pretty sure that our value was at about 4.88. So in seven, eight years, it has grown close to three. And so I think it's been a pretty, almost, it's been a really dynamic time in this last five, six years, but, but I don't, I don't know if you can bet on that.
I want to go back to what Neil said about like, um, what were you talking about? Where some of those, I don't know what you call them. Like the development agency themes that are coming off.
CRAs, yes.
Yes. When are those coming off and how much will those generate?
2029 is the last year of three of them and that will generate about $3.3 million of new tax revenue.
Starting in 2029?
Starting 2030, 2030. 2029 is our last.
And then 2029 is our bond.
Pay off.
Falls off, which would, is how much?
3.3. It's about a net 6.5 million dollar swing.
In 2030.
That's only an amount of taxes. That doesn't, that bond falling off doesn't allow us to get more taxes because.
No, but it reduces the residence tax.
It reduces the tax. We can't truth in taxation to capture that because.
So essentially it reduced the, if we use average tax values, property values today, we don't want to do in the future, but using today's values, that would reduce the average homeowner's payment by $8 a month when that bond falls off. The C areas coming on doesn't affect residence tax payments. It just represents new commercial value to the district of $3.3 million per year, which in effect could be used to offset that bond payment and lower the bond payment that year. and lower the bond payment that year, if we wanted to. Or we could use that $3.3 million to reinvest in district operations or staff or whatever the board determines is needed at that time.
What is this $6 million, what bond?
So the...
To be net neutral, what amount of bond could we give? If we could get it to pass?
Good question. Using the number we have right now, that represents about 2 and 1/2. Well, I'm gonna go here. So, bond coming off $3.3 million represents approximately $8 a month on the average home. So reinvest and keep rates level, you would gain another $3.3 million of annual revenue, which would probably service a bond right around in the $40 million range.
So we have to go 1.
Yeah.
At the base of that.
Yes.
That's why, this is why I struggle with bonds a little bit, just because of cost and, like, how much it's gonna cost to do anything? And when, I don't know, I just feel like...
It, it's a risk. I, I bought a new home in 2022. I had 1 interest rate in Pennsylvania, and I had $1 amount in Pennsylvania for materials. As soon as I was getting ready to buy materials and pour foundation, that then blew up. The cost of 1 up $140,000. We did some reengineering, changed plans, and because of that, I, interest rates then at the end of my construction period doubled. I had no control over that. Literally, it added several 10s to 20s percentage points to my mortgage payment because of that. We're in the same situation. The future's unknown. We can plan for what we know now, and we can react to the future as it comes to us. Unfortunately, that's the best thing we can do.
So, Tiffany, didn't you say you had 2 things? I feel like you said 1.
Oh, you did. I think I'm feeling more comfortable around the $100 million. And that leaves us $40 million option plus growth if we needed to truth in taxation again before anything else came up.
Can we move to, just, I'm not, I'm not trying to erase that thought, but we, on our agenda, we have to organize a Facilities Advisory Community Committee. And my question would be, at what point do exactly, and I'm looking for your guidance over here, most, a lot, as well as yours, but I wanna hear theirs first, as what, what you see this, this community committee being involved in? And is that graph that, with all those ideas, something that we would like those communities to take a look at and understand? I think the more people that understand those numbers and, and that, that difference of, of what they're gonna be... If the bond had passed, what we could have gotten with that versus what we're gonna get with this? I think that's an important thing for our community to understand, just to wrap your head around why we wanted that much money in a bond and what we can get with. At what point do you, I, I wanted this advisory committee, we wanted this advisory committee 2, 3 years ago. So I don't wanna wait another year to get these people involved. I'd like to have a date of our first meeting set tonight when we leave, and how we're gonna gather those people, and when we have those names turned in. I want those dates decided tonight. So maybe, can we skip to that? And you tell us the problems you see with that and guide us on that?
Question I would have, maybe just as a, um... Is, are the people that you want on this committee, were they for a bond or were they not for a bond?
I don't know how they voted.
Right, that's my point. Is, I don't know, I mean, having value is, here's the next steps. And, you know, it's probably good to have some people that say, I didn't vote for this, I don't like this idea. But I think we gotta have a few people on the vote that said, I did vote for it. And now we start looking at all of these options and say, you know, fewer that came for the day.
Sure, and I think it's really important to have people on there that are like, hey, I didn't vote for this.
You know, if all we have is school community council members, although they're really important, you know, we got a lot of people that voted no besides our school people. So, you know, how many of those do you have? Who they are? I think getting their feedback would be great. We're here to plan, and here is the puzzle. And we've gotta come up with a, within an unknown world, right?
Tell me what it would look like if you had, there's 7 of you, uh, 2 each, 14 people in this room more looking at the information we just shared. I, I, I think that's what we need to say, and I think we have the discussion and let people ask questions. I don't, I think once you start getting, if you want 3, and that's 21 people, more, you know what I mean? So I, I think that's a little bit important, you know, because it's, the bigger the group, the slower the process. But I, I think input, you know, from the right group, and I'm, I'm not telling you can't have 4 each. That's a decision you guys have gotta make. But I, I do know, in a room like this, you know, right now, we're 2 hours and 20 minutes. You know, I, I would just tell you, on board meeting night, like, I just figured midnight, I'm, I'm fine. That's why I'm never pushing agendas. That's because that's how I think of it. So I'm not scared of coming to a meeting with those folks. I'm not scared. I think it's the thing to do, to help us, you know, maybe get off of an old mechanical term, and probably Neil might be one that, maybe Cory, to get off the top dead center. Do you know what that means?
Yep, power of the distance.
Okay. Do you know, Cory, who else is a mechanic?
I'm not.
That's an old, that's an old mechanical term, and now they don't have that because of carburetors and fuel injection and all that stuff, correct?
Yep.
But they usually call it, get off the top dead center.
That's where I heard it.
What's that? Okay, sorry.
Probably sugar.
I'm sorry to get off on that tangent. But I, I think in, in most things, when you have something this big, it would be good to hear from a great group of people. You know, and it would probably, we'd probably have to tell them, it's gonna take an hour and a half just to present the information, and then another hour and a half for the discussion. You know, and I'm talking just that first meeting.
Yeah. Well, so is there a purpose to help us make this decision or just give input? They don't have a vote.
Yeah, I think that's the big question, is, is what is their purpose? Is it to help you, to help disseminate information? You know, or to help you make the decision and then also help you disseminate the information?
When we did the survey, I've been told that the last question was, would you be willing to be in bond?
Yeah, we have like 500 people.
Sign me up?
Yeah, absolutely, we would.
And I've had people contact me and ask...
And say, how do I know? Yeah, so...
So we have the people. We don't know how they voted, but that's, at least they're interested.
They're interested. But what was their thought when we asked that question? What did we want them to help us with?
This committee, yeah, future bond planning. Bringing them in to show them the demographic report when it's finished. Also, we had asked at the time, what, what do you think about opening Lakeview? So if we, if that had gotten a, sorry, foothill and moving kids from Lakeview, if that had gotten a positive response from the people local to that area, bringing them in to decide how to do that too? We would have then focused on those parents in the Lakeview boundaries, right? Because we wouldn't have wanted to do that to them. We would have wanted them to have a space. But we do have a list of people that can be used for any number of things we decide.
But I think, the number was so big, we go, ooh, how are we...
Well, I, I would like to see who responded it because as a board member, then maybe I would...
Select from that group.
Look at some of those names. I mean...
Are we picking only from our precinct? I don't think that would matter. Like, I can only pick people from my precinct? So every precinct's represented?
Part of me thinks the value in that is someone from Snowville.
Yeah.
Who would not have a voice in, because they're from, you know, your precinct.
But I can't get someone from...
I do think, I do think we need to keep our, remember that these, it would be great if these people, I think, voted to represent...
I think their background is more important than diversity than where they live. Like, I think it'd be really good to have a business person that deals with a lot of this kinda stuff. And I think having people that have worked in the district before so that they have that feel of what it's like to be a teacher and having an overcrowded school and classrooms. And I think having, yeah, just diversity.
I totally agree with you. I can think of 2 or 3 of those types, of those groups you just mentioned in Grass Creek and Building, right? So, which I'm sure you can think of 2 or 3 people in your area that fit those.
Yeah.
Right, in your area.
So do we do, do we say 2 each? And then throw in a few more principals and a few more teachers? Or, so we have some...
I think if you want a community, you wanna keep a community. And if you want, um, district employees, you have a separate one district employees. Because I think the community people, at least the ones that have come to me, have felt like that that would be, they, they wouldn't be influenced by...
But I think it's good for them to be influenced by each other because it's, like, it's, it's the teachers that are being very impacted on this. And if they aren't able to voice what's the problem, then I think the community is completely confused on what the problem is. Which is why I think it's really hard to even trust the community. Like, it's our fault if we're not giving that information out so that they understand and they're educated to make that decision. But it made me so frustrated when those comments came back. I don't even have a student in school, I'm not gonna go guess. And it's like, I don't trust you to even care.
If you go back to community councils, there must be a reason why they have more community members than school members.
But they aren't voting on anything.
No, but there's a...
The mix of all of them in the same group, though. I think it's important for community members to hear.
I, I did say they couldn't hear, but I don't think that we want them...
Nobody's voting on them?
To, no, but to, to say their voice. If we, if we wanna hear from the community, we wanna make it as open.
And you think that the teachers in the room as well?
No, if we have a lot of...
I didn't mean a lot. I meant like 3 elementary, 3 secondary, 4, I don't know.
I guess, well, the, the community council rules, you have 2 more parents than school members. So if you scale that, and, you know, you're looking at a 5 to 7-member community council, and you have 14 community members, and then you have 7 to 8 parent or teacher, I mean, that's, I'm just looking at the scale of that.
I think that's a great model. Are you happy to vote that model?
I guess it goes back to, if you want, if board members want, if you said it's part of their pick, that's who they would pick. But if that's their pick, I wouldn't add more in.
So, I guess I don't know what you mean.
So if you wanted to pick an elementary teacher as part of your, what, 2 people?
Well, then those numbers don't work out like a community council does.
But if, if you wanted them in there, then they're in there.
I see value in having both opinions in the room.
I'll tell you this, the other night, what night was it? Thursday? Thursday, Thursday night, I really felt like I had a great experience listening with the listening sessions.
Oh, yeah?
And the teachers and the classified, the, sorry, the ESPs. I thought they're very open. I thought their thoughts and ideas were very well thought out. They're represented. So I, you know, something, to hear some of those concerns, I think mixed in with this is very, very helpful.
Brian, do you, what are your thoughts on that?
So I think that, uh, purposes of having community council, uh, or community folks on this committee is to, to show that as a board, as a demonstration, we welcome input from the community, and also to, to get their ideas. And then hopefully, when they become a part of the process and see some of the challenges, have some of the discussion, they become an advocate for us. So those are the, the thoughts that I have. I, I have had people ask me to be on the, on the committee, so, um... Anyway, th- those are my thoughts. I think having each, each board member select 2 or 3, I think would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One more thought on the numbers. 14 is probably a good number, but it seems like at any time, there's gonna be some that aren't gonna be there. So I, I think...
And I don't mind if it's bigger, I just don't, I don't...
We aim for 3, that puts us at what, 21? And probably at any time, you're gonna have at least 4 or 5 that aren't there. Just a thought.
So we, we say shoot for 3, 2 have to be from your precinct, and 1 does not have to be? Could we divide that with...
What if we did 2 community members and 1 from the school district? Wouldn't that be okay? I guess, and, and you're saying precincts. I guess I don't really care where they're, I guess, I had the smallest ones, so I guess I was there. But, I mean, I have, I know it's...
I can say 3, and people choose who they choose.
No bound, no boundary restriction, just 3.
Are you comfortable with 3, Brian? But they also have to accept 2, so we can change our vote.
Well, I'd like to know, like, I'd like to pick people from the people I represent. I, I, just because I represent a huge swath, not, I mean, population-wise, we're all about the same, but trying to get people's different perspectives, I think it does make a difference if you are, you know, like, Corinne, for example, has a different look at what elementary schools or things might be versus Lakeview. And, and some of those things...
Our family's totally different.
I don't know. On Grass Creek, but, um...
Couldn't we, as board members, decide that? Do, do we have to have someone from our precinct? Or can we just decide?
No, I don't think, but I'd like to, I, what I, what I was saying is, the people that said I would be interested in, is there a way to find the ones from my precinct so I could reach out to them? Like, that's what I'm just trying to, because I can't, I can't scour through 500 names. I'm not gonna know them all. But I would like to think there was these people, and I know or not, I don't know if that's possible, though. If not, then I'll just do it another way, but...
Just emails.
All we have is emails.
The only point is, I don't, I don't know that we have to say they have to be from our precinct. If we choose to have them from our precinct, find that does not, that's okay too, right?
Yeah. Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
What did he say? That if, that's the way you choose to choose them, that if you, you have someone you want to pick that's not in your...
We could share with you the list.
Marcy has the list.
Okay.
And then, um...
We separated it from the survey, so nothing would be attached or, you know,
We separated it from the survey, so nothing would be attached, or, you know, so.
Then you could look at it, and maybe you do know if some of these are in your precinct, and might be good to have a good variety across the district.
So you can't separate it into.
All we have is email address and cell phone numbers.
Okay, that's fine. I don't think, some we have cell phone numbers, some they didn't even give their name, we just kinda said, if you'd like to be part of it, please let us know, so we, I can even share that with all board members right now, and you can go through and say, oh, I know who these people are, or.
I know, but there is, there is one other thing that, I don't know if we should do this, but using either Alan Shakespeare or Robert Gordon to put those emails in a quarry, and compare them to Aspire, Ascent Information System, and see if we know what parent, you know, if they are a parent in our district. Obviously, people that took the survey were not all from, you know, they weren't all the parents, so it's hard, we're not gonna have any.
I don't want it to be, I just thought if it was.
We can just send you the name, and then we can decide, or if you have others that have already reached out, that's fine too.
Well, I, I'd like to see the list, so that if the ones that have reached out are on there, then it's a.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good fit.
Yeah, I'd like to see the list, but.
So you have it right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so Heidi Jo's gonna send that to you, just a second.
And what?
So can we look at those, or we need to have these now? If I'd like to.
You know, what, what do you see as far as the June board meeting? What information do you need by the June board meeting? You're gonna present a budget, this probably won't affect that.
Nope.
So.
So we have a variety of things we need to do in June board meeting, we need proposed tax rates, proposed budget, revision for this current fiscal budget, we have a few items that we need to include in there, that weren't in the original budget, such as school bus purchases that were purchased or reserved two years ago, that are gonna get delivered, but they aren't in the current budget, due to some accounting, I guess, just some differences of the accounting purposes and how it's in the budget, but it was done years ago. So, and we also need to do reconvene, reauthorize the Boxhelder building.
We need the building authority?
Yes, we need to reauthorize that as well.
Did you say though, that we have to know by June first whether we're going to truth and taxation?
That's correct.
We don't know, need to know the amount, we just need to know if we're going.
Yes, I need to tell the county and the state, the day, the time, and the place that we will hold the hearing for that.
I, I think, in my vote is we're going to truth and taxation. We have to do something.
I think we have to do something as well.
What we don't have to do is, we don't have to decide what is the.
Yeah, that's what I was, I guess I just wanted to clarify that, but we'd have to say, yes, we're going, but we don't have to say, I did four, or whatever it is.
Okay. Brian, where are you, can you give us your thoughts on whether we go or not to truth and taxation, without those boundaries of how much and, and what we're going to do with it?
Yeah, I agree that we should, should go into truth and taxation, I'm just not real clear on what our number one priority is.
Okay.
Typically, we do that in August, so we have a few months.
Don't let anything important happen with yourself. That's why you told me.
I don't wanna set parameters on this committee, as far as like guarantee a certain amount of meetings, or, I'd like, I'd really like to meet within this once, and then see how it goes, and see what outcomes we get from it, and whether we, whether we regret the way that it happened, or, and be able to move that.
We could almost treat it like a one-time thing, and then see how it evolves.
Right. And see how it evolves from.
Kind of present everything that's been here tonight.
Right.
Get input and say, hey, would you like to meet more to, you know, I hope it not works from now.
No, no, that's exactly.
Yeah. Well, and I think that, when, when are we gonna, like, how soon will, like, soon? Yeah? Like.
Well.
Before truth and taxation?
Oh, absolutely. I, I would presume the first couple of weeks of June.
Okay, because I, that's what I was gonna say, if we need to.
Soon. What dates are our June board meeting? Eleven? Yes. That would be hard with graduations and.
What about Wednesday, June eighteenth?
I'm, I'm out of the country till the twenty-third.
Well, good for you.
I know.
Will you be to board meeting?
I'm going to Luxembourg to do a fifty mile military walk with my son. You guys will probably be picking me up.
Do you have to have a rucksack?
That, that sounds like.
He does.
Not, not a flat fifty miles.
That sounds like a real.
In a day?
Huh?
In what day?
Three days. Anybody wants to join me, come along.
I think that would be an awesome experience.
I'll be your support vehicle.
So does he have to carry all your stuff for you?
He has to be in full rucksack.
So are you sleeping, you sleep, or are you just kinda nap? I don't know.
So that, what about June twenty-fifth?
That's my husband's birthday.
Well, I'm in Yellowstone till the twenty-sixth, but I can.
How about Monday, the sixteenth? Oh, you're out of the country. Okay, find a date, list three, find a date. July ninth will be our full day, or most of the day.
I can do the twenty-sixth, you said the twenty-fifth, right?
Yes.
That's just a birthday, so I, I can do the twenty.
Twenty-sixth, I can do the evening probably.
I'm gonna be gone for the.
Do we just need to move it to the eleventh? Prior to board, prior to board meeting, and move the other things we would've done in work session either earlier or after board meeting? I don't know if that gives us enough time to accomplish what we wanna accomplish.
Or is it the day after board meeting, or?
I'm even, I'm actually, he was wanting to leave my.
I said I have to do board meetings.
I'm actually.
Do we do it right before sunrise?
What is sunrise? I'm gonna be out.
The twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The twelve.
I didn't realize. You said they could do the twenty-sixth?
I can't.
What about? At the twenty-fourth?
Have to, okay. There, there's gonna come a time where we're gonna have to just pick a date and.
Right, is it twenty-four?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Yeah.
And then in Yellowstone, but. Is it Saturday, Friday, Saturday? Do we need to go?
We're picking a day to meet with the Facilities Advisory Community Committee, that's, that's the, you know, the. Yes.
Is June ninth to?
Are you gonna be here on the twenty-fifth?
Do we just go back to do that Monday before?
I was just wondering if I was the only one on the twenty-fifth.
June ninth?
Does June ninth sound like somebody?
I can do June fourth, I know it's only, I can do June ninth.
Everybody, it looks like everybody but Wade, which is because he's not here, so I don't know. I'll be down on the ninth, I'll be here the Saturday, principal, that conference.
I don't know if I'm super comfortable doing it without Keith and.
What about the ten?
When, yeah, when do you?
I'll, I'll be back the eleventh, I leave my conference at noon, so I'll be back by two o'clock, on the eleventh, that's board meeting day. Yeah, I'll be back that afternoon if you want to go before.
How long, how long do you need for this meeting to?
This is, this needs to be an evening meeting with the community.
I don't think we wanna rush it in an hour.
Well, didn't you say we had an hour and a half to just present the stuff, and then we would like an hour and a half discussion?
Well, I think with, I don't know, an hour, hour and a half, with what we basically presented, just to let it soak in.
What about June second?
That's everyone's first day of summers, so.
It's my birthday, I'll bring a cake.
I'll make you a cake, I'm really good at cheesecake. I'm not here on his birthday.
I don't know if we have time to.
Is that too soon?
June second for admin meeting?
We'd be okay, because.
But it would be in there, evening.
This would be.
What was that, we did the twelfth, or do we need to do it before the eleventh?
I'm out of town.
Oh, Saturday.
I'm glad we shared. Not hiding. And I won't be here that night either. Is sunrise the twelfth?
Yeah. Sorry, I, I think I missed last year, and I can't remember why, and I go back.
July second?
The year before you spoke, I remember that.
I spoke the year before, but we have finding that we're on tickets that we don't.
What about July second?
July second? Yep, I can do the second, that works. It's Rod Cook's birthday, in case anyone cares.
The only, the only, I mean, I'm fine, it is the Wednesday before a third, fourth, fifth, maybe most people haven't left them.
I doubt it.
I mean, I'm around on the.
I think a lot of people, the community members, might, that's where you were going, huh?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Not me.
Yeah, I think that. The community members that are trying to get here may be headed out that close to the fourth.
I mean, I would love to be in this discuss, I would love to be here, but if you need to schedule on a time I'm not here, I understand how it's.
Well, one of the things is, we'll, we can record it, I mean, I guess we get permission right there, just by the way, it's being recorded, just, just for not, this hasn't been live streamed, just recorded for.
Yeah. Well, was there a pledge of the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of June?
I've done the twenty-sixth, but I think I'm.
What about the twenty-fifth, was your husband's birthday? Is that right?
It is, but she's in Yellowstone.
Twenty-fourth is the same thing, probably.
Yeah, I leave on Saturday.
But if you wanna get me out of that.
No, I'm a little nervous.
Do you want to be on Yellowstone?
All by myself with three children, and I've never done it before.
The twenty-sixth was every.
I have girls camp, so I'm.
Well.
What about June thirtieth, have we thrown?
So I have a, this is just a, just something to consider. This group is not going to influence anything for a, a plan that's going to move the high schools into building by November. My point is, is if we pause the additions to the high school, this committee meeting is important, meeting it right now will not influence the spring, because if we go to truth and taxation, whatever that number is, that's gonna happen, money will start to come in, where we go and which phase would be what this committee could be for, so if we have to wait till August, if we can't find, you know, and do it the, before the August school board meeting, or the week of, I mean, in August, I guess, we're still got time to hear their results before we have to, we still have time to have the demographer and all of that information being gathered as well, I don't know.
Yes, my thought on having them before we vote on truth and taxation is that they are an extra twenty-five people that can say, talk to their community members and say, their neighbors.
This is why I'm doing it, whether they.
They have no choice, they, this is.
They've heard a detailed discussion of why.
That was my.
How about May, uh, twenty?
We only have graduation.
Not, I think you guys should have three nights gone in a row, that'd be great. You feel like when the assistant principal is, I thought so, but I am very.
Twenty-ninth is a viable option.
May twenty-fifth, fifth, or June first works for me.
Twenty Sunday?
That's about doing it, and that doesn't work, I'm just kidding, come on, we ain't lying now. June second, June third, June fourth.
June third, June fourth, they're really good.
Fourth sounds great.
Are you around?
You have a birthday on what day?
The second.
Happy birthday Julie, on June second.
Yeah, we're not doing the second.
But we could go June.
Third or fourth.
Fourth.
I'd never do anything for my birthday, so.
June fourth.
That's really good.
We could be more.
We'd have, we'd have a birthday, Tiffany, June fourth, Brian, June fourth.
No, you poor guy.
Should we do May twenty-ninth?
Uh, May twenty-ninth, I've got other commitments for each year.
It's a Friday date night.
Is it like?
The last day of school, I don't think.
Did we throw, what was June nineteenth, we were out till twenty-four?
June nineteenth is Juneteenth.
Don't we celebrate it on Monday?
That's cheesy. Not Boxhelder. We're moving it to Monday next year.
Oh, but it's not this year.
It's a federal state holiday.
I thought it was.
She has like a state meeting that day, and.
And they said, I said, what is it?
Juneteenth, and they said, will we celebrate it on Monday?
Well, we don't.
Can I, can I ask, is there a board work session? Scheduled in July?
It's that day, we have a half day.
But that's not gonna work for the community.
That's not.
What is the board work session in June?
Just an hour, it's five thirty to six thirty.
Could we do two hours and do it then, on the date that we're already gonna be there, or no? Can we start board meeting later again, six thirty?
But can we get community members there at four thirty, that's the question, ask people to leave their jobs, and, I don't know.
Could we push back, work meeting will start at seven thirty instead of six thirty?
Where we have, we have hearings there, that makes it a little bit suspect, don't we have a June?
Truth and taxation.
Is that the MBA here?
It's MBA, that's proposed tax rate, proposed budgets, revision of this year's budgets, some fair amount of budget material.
Generally, you can't move them up, because they, they're supposed, a lot of these are supposed to be after five thirty, so people can be there for work.
After, so after six P M for budget. But, well, this is the tentative budget we're passing, let me clarify, the state tax is tomorrow. Well, whatever requires.
No, June eleventh right now.
Yes.
I can't do the eleven. You're talking about pushing it back?
Pushing board meeting back.
What about, oh, you couldn't do the date of fourth, because of.
Yeah, he's still.
A high school location, that's why I never go.
No, it's, you're asking.
You taught elementary one day, it's always during board meetings in the spring.
All right, well, I think if you just keep wasting time, if we can't find a date, I'm sure what.
All we can do is do some calendar searches, and maybe they're giving a, send out a second hearing of the dates.
And I think it would be helpful to know what, I'm still confused, I guess it should be, but, so, does this committee like, because we're gonna go to truth and taxation, do we want them to know how much we're gonna go, because that's why we're pushing earlier, so we can have, like, are they gonna help us decide which plan?
That's what I heard. I'll be on your committee.
Okay. Send us an email.
I would like, I would like them to see the graph of our different options, different ideas, different costs, so that there's an understanding of when we do choose an amount, why.
Why? Well, and then what Keith was saying, we don't need to, we could wait till August because that number doesn't need to be set until.
I'm sensing, I'm sensing that we're not ready to go to, you know, idea one was compete with the two high schools.
Yeah.
And add a elementary school. I'm not sensing we're there yet. Maybe we're still.
Wade was there, right? I know that he was.
Wade was there, but.
I'm not gone, I'm not gone. I'm cur, yeah, I'm curious like what we could recoup from selling property, and how that would play into, and I think some of the community members will wanna know those things. Could we maybe just set a date, even if not everyone can be there, but the community members could be there, and then reach out to board members and tell them their perceptions? I don't know if that would be possible, but Tiffany, I mean, yeah, you, I was gonna say, if Keith or I can't make it, maybe one or the other could try to share information, but.
I think it's important that you're there.
Sometimes I think it'd be better if I didn't speak to vote.
You always say that.
Would it be too late to pick a time during the next board meeting? Like, if you started reaching out to people right now, but then.
They're, they're.
Because then you, because you don't have, like Wade's not here, you have, I don't know.
You mean Wade tell June eleven to pick a date?
Or do a. What if that was on the agenda for June eleven? Like what else is on the agenda?
Or what if we came up with three dates that ninety percent of us could be there? And then we, you could go out, select your members, and say, hey, these are kind of the dates we're looking at, which ones would work best for you, and kind of flavor, then you could make the decision based on what they're scheduled, it's maybe not what ours is, because we have to choose some dates. I'm hearing, I'm hearing June fourth is an option, right? Was that, I swear that was a date. We got most everybody, Brian is in Moab, June second is Julie's birthday.
I don't care if it's on my birthday.
Brian, when are you going to Moab?
Ask my husband, will you do anything? No.
You should, you should do it.
So June second, we don't know what Wade would do, or June third, that'd get me out of some meetings that I could, you know.
Another thought, like, what if, is it possible to do it on June eleventh and move up, like, our information items and things like that to four thirty, and do the work session at the end instead? Like, if we started earlier.
Well, the trouble is, is if we'd have said that before the May board meeting, just, people complained when we changed times, I mean.
So you can do that, you could move it later, but not earlier.
Yeah, budget items need to start after.
After six, that's right.
So is two hours prior.
Your consent items.
But let me, let me clarify, this is a tentative budget hearing, we're gonna pass a, please hold a budget, if that requirement at six P M still holds. Where if we declare taxation on June one, June eleven is tentative, and are actually appearing until August.
That one for sure, you have to go after six.
Yes, and it has to be first thing on the budget, on the agenda.
So I guess I was kinda thinking like information items, like personnel and policies and, I don't know.
So going back to what Keith said, the second or the fourth, third or fourth?
Corey said the fourth is rough for him, but maybe June third?
Second, I'm telling you, I know whether.
Second looks really good. Let's bring.
We can all bring Julie again. Give me a birthday party.
If we do it on the second, it's happening.
I've never celebrated, growing up, I, my brother's birthday is June third, mine's June second, it was always a combined whatever, however, whatever.
My dad never, never remembered my birthday, so I don't like birthday celebrations.
You guys all celebrating their birthday, and I appreciate it. Christmas.
I mean, we even said June third, is there somebody that?
I'll, I'm losing the meaning for June third, June third is hard for me.
June third, I'm just thinking, it's hard for you, I was just thinking, in communities, some people still keep the Mondays somewhat family, but if, if we can make June third work, I think that would-
You can bring it back. You can bring it back, good idea.
June third is my eight-year-old's birthday, but-
You can't miss that.
Well, I'm not gonna miss it, I'll be there in the better way.
If you're out of school, you can celebrate all day.
He left on the-
He leaves on the fourth. Correct, Ryan, you leave on June fourth.
What if we did like the second, what was the other date that ninety, almost everybody could be to, with the-
June twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, oh, that's when I could, I couldn't be there, but everybody else could.
Who can't do the second?
No one.
You.
I, yeah, everybody can, I just brought up that, community members might wanna keep Mondays, seriously.
It was the best, the one I had little kids, my mother-in-law would come and stay at my house for the day and I would go do whatever I wanted during the day.
She's always fun about mothers.
I don't wanna get up and make everybody birthday, it's not a day where she's supposed to celebrate me.
Yeah, and then the dishes all day, 'cause everybody came over.
Yeah.
Did somebody have issues on May twenty-ninth?
I do. June ninth, I'm doing U T stuff.
I'm gonna charge a relief society act, so people, you can take me out of that too.
I like the idea of sooner rather than later, too, like, maybe we put out May twenty-ninth and June second and third and see what we get, hits, what everybody can do.
You know, they really wanna do it though, sometimes they just make it, you know, they make it work. It's hard giving them options, 'cause then they'll be like, well, I couldn't come to that one.
Well, I mean, even to the board that, oh, not be there.
We can, we can do the second, 'cause it sounded like everybody could do the second, my own.
Why don't we do that, I, that sounds like the best, so if you guys, do you guys wanna reach out to your folks and invite them, I think that's the most impactful.
It'd be nice though to know who everybody else is asking, so I don't have to double ask them, it's basically just June, not that I'm worried about.
I'd love to actually-
I think they'll tell you, like, I'm already coming, you know, or I can't do that day, and you can say, okay, I'll keep going down the list, we have four hundred choices.
You can ask them if they're, what, what time should we say, June second at, six-thirty? Six?
Six.
Six? June second at six. I think we should take a moment and-
Hardest thing of the whole meeting.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I have one, I just would like to ask, we have to go to negotiations tomorrow. We have to collect the bargaining, closed session, politics require.
So, yeah, we have to turn off the recording before we go to that, right?
Well, no, we keep the recording on, I would, but it's closed session, so it can only be grandma requested. Right, Neil?
Yep.
Can I ask before we do that, leadership team, did we accomplish, did, were you able to share what you needed to share, accomplish what we needed to accomplish, so far? Yes, one, quickly, um, the teen center, Karen brought up questions with that, and they're, that is, they were valid questions, but I just wanted to, you to, to know how our L C F Ws feel about, and they did some re, good rethinking and asking about, um, what they would deem as really necessary or not necessary, anyway, read them in your own time, we're not gonna discuss them, I just wanted you to have that confirmation.
Hey, he's coming with L C F W.
So licensed clinical social workers.
I, I didn't know that, I knew that from that, but I didn't know from the foundation.
Right.
We've got one on each end of the district that really works with these.
They're the ones on the ground who see these kids and know the needs, and so that's, I just reached out and tried to get one for elementary. So, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Wait, if you're going into closed session, then I can, you don't, you don't want me here.